Thank you.
And behalf of Bush Gardens, Pete Ravi couldn't be here. Here's tickets for your family.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you Stanley. Appreciate it.
Morning council. I'm Jeff Howke. I'm a marketing and PR manager for Columbia Restaurant Group. On behalf of the Columbia Restaurant Group and its 1,000 employees, as well as the Godsmar family and its five generations, we'd like to congratulate you and thank you for all you do for our community and bestow you with a $115 gift card to come enjoy at the Columbia Restaurant. Hundred and fifteen signifies the 115th anniversary that we'll celebrate this December. So we hope you'll come soon and enjoy your time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Morning council. Mike MacArthur, Stepstowing Service. I just want to start off real quick to wish Todd Step a happy birthday today. You know, the reason Stepstowing is involved in this and I won't call him out on age, but he may or may not be 50. Happy birthday Todd Step. Officer, congratulations on the job. Well done.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of Todd Step and Stepstowing Service, we'd like to present you a Bass Pro gift card and a night out in our company limousine. You sound like you're very busy. Take some time off. Enjoy it.
Absolutely.
Have a great night.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning council. Carlos Ramos with the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority. An officer on behalf of your service to our city and on behalf of Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority. Want to give you a goodie bag and it includes a $50 gift card to Applebee's.
Thank you very much.
Go and enjoy and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning. Rayu Bailey here on behalf of Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park. Thank you for your service. We truly appreciate it. I'm a resident of Hyde Park and in the thick of the Gasparilla craziness. So I really like this new mobile unit. That sounds great. But I do want to thank you for your service and all of your teammates here and we're presenting you with the family membership to Zoo Tampa. And it's good for a year, so you can go anytime, as often as you want. And Creatures of the Night is going on right now. It's a fun Halloween event. I went last weekend. It was a blast. So thank you for your service and enjoy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning honorable council members. I'm Bob Canigliaro and this Dustin Portillo, Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants of Submergent. We're so proud of you and the job that you've done to support us and the community. And your peers that are here to honor you today. Got a few tokens from Casper's Company McDonald's and gift certificates, some tchotchkes for some kids and some giveaways and so forth. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good morning council. Chief Brian Ford with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. And Officer Merchant, on behalf of the Glazer family and our entire organization, we have a tradition out at One Buck where we hand out game balls for those that go over and above. And hearing your story, you're definitely deserving of this game ball. Can't wait to see it out at Raymond James Stadium.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service and sacrifice.
Good morning council. Lee Evan Name with Tampa Theater. Officer, thank you so much for your service in our community. On behalf of Tampa Theater, I'm honored to give you the gift of the membership so you can come and visit us on Franklin Street.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a couple of things and when you leave here, you're gonna either gain weight or you're gonna gain prosperity with your fellow officers because they're gonna want to join you. On behalf of Yummy House China Bistro, we're providing you with a gift certificate so you can go enjoy yourself for lunch or dinner. See, this one's really important. This is going to the Y. So after you eat all of this food and you enjoy all these things, you can go to the Y and enjoy yourself over there. On behalf of Aqua, a restaurant located on Courtney Campbell Causeway out at the Weston Hotel, you can go enjoy yourself for breakfast, lunch, or dinner. On behalf of Forbici, modern Italian restaurant, new in Hyde Park, you can go enjoy yourself over there for lunch or dinner. On behalf of the Chichas Restaurant Group, breakfast, lunch, or dinner, depending on which one of the establishments you want to go to. And Prestige Portraits, you can go have your picture taken. I would recommend after the Y.
After a couple months after the Y.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sir, I gotta tell you, and I'd be pretty upset if I were you. You're the only officer of the month that hasn't received a Ford Mustang, man. I'd be seriously upset if I were you.
No, I'm sure Jim is around the corner. I'm gonna read this off to you because I'm gonna sound like a broken record. Every officer should get one of these for the great things that your department does, for the great things that your brothers and sisters do for us. And if anybody in the audience ever wants to see what these officers go through, the Tampa Citizens Police Academy is the place to go. You will learn everything that they do to keep this city safe. So officer, because of your dedication to service, commitment to excellence, and going above and beyond the call of duty, you have been chosen for this mark of distinction as Officer of the Month for the security of Tampa Police Department's new Mobile Post Command to creating a threat-assisted tabletop exercise, community partners, to serving on the public, excuse me, the Police Memorial Committee. Your service is commended by your peers and superiors. This award is a symbol of your contributions toward the making of Tampa better, safer, and more secure place to live, work, and play. It is the Tampa City Council's honor to present Officer Stanley Merchant with commendation on the 24th day of October 2019.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, officer.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Now you're on the hot spot.
Yes, sir. Let me begin by saying wow. That's extremely humbling. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here. Thank the staff for allowing me to walk up here and choose me. I appreciate it. Thank you to everybody in this room. At the end of the day, it's humbling because if you've been any time with the Tampa Police Department, you realize a lot of talent here, as we see as one of our illustrious alumni, sitting on the council. So it's very humbling that I'm sitting in this seat today. Thank you to my major, my sergeant corporal, sergeant seal, corporal hindrance. Nobody walks alone in life. Somebody's gotta open those doors, allow you to do that work, and give you the freedom to do it. So it's phenomenal. And lastly, I can't say anything without the guys I walk with every day, Squad 511. You guys comport a little bit? Come forward a little bit? Thank you. Yes, absolutely. So just so you realize, these are the guys, when there are large events here, they put it together, make sure everybody's safe. So thank you God for everything and thank you so much for having me. Thank you.
And sir, before you leave, some of our members would like to say their words, starting with your former colleague, I'm sure.
My man Stanley. You know, I'm always excited to see officers get the Officer of the Month. But I'm gonna just be blunt. It's ecstatic when I see one of my own get that award. I know how it feels to get that award. No one knows how it truly feels for one of us to get that award. It's unforgettable for the service and the work you're doing and for all the officers. But for me, when I see one of my own up there getting that award, it's just a special feeling.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you. When I see my good friend, Mr. Tally here, is protecting us this morning, but I say to both of you, work hard, take that test. Do not go a year by without taking that test. We need more leaders like you in the high-ranking levels. Take the test. Take the test.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for everything you've done and I notice more and more police officers of the month are becoming perfect-headed. You know, I always gotta add a little humor to everything and when you look, just look to your right, to my left, and some already there, some want to be there. And we're getting there because the great chief that we have has set the trend.
Right.
I knew Brian when he had long curls. And if walking the street doesn't do it, then something's wrong because everyone that comes up here just about, he's got a perfect head. And what you've done is working the things that people take for granted, but all the things that the chief said are very important in life and getting people in and out. When you look at the parade itself, the Gasparillas and others, the work that the police department does along with other departments, like Solid Waste along with others, it's amazing because two hours after the parade, you never knew there was a parade. And the arrests have certainly been down because the ways you, individuals in the police department, men and women, have done it creates an ambiance that you want to go have fun. You don't want to create any injuries. And thank you all, especially yourself, for being police officers.
Thank you. Thank you for saying it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you very much, sir, for your service and work. Do you have any family or members here today?
No, no. Mother came to take care of my grandfather. My wife is in school to be on RN. So I want it over.
Well, God bless. I was gonna say no because I mean, you know better than most of us up here, except for, of course, Councilman Gudes, that when you're a first responder, a police officer, your families are the ones that takes the hits because they see you leave for work every day and they know the risks that you take every day and they pray for you every day, but they're the ones who are there for you. So I think that's important. Well, thank you, sir. God bless you and thank you for your service.
Thank you for saying it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, before we bring, ask Chief Dugan to come up here. I want to take care of some house cleaning. Councilman Niskel, was there an item you wanted to move, sir?
Yes, for the workshop, item number 17, for the banning of single-use plastics, I'd like to reschedule that to the next workshop session that I see is fairly light, January 30th, 9:00 a.m.
Excuse me, I just have a question. I'm sorry. With regard to the calendar, I'm gonna direct your attention to the schedule because per your...
If y'all don't mind, thank you. If you guys don't mind, thank you.
Per your memo, Mr. Chairman, we began scheduling them in half hour.
So for 10:30 a.m. on January 30th in the council workshop session.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion. My Councilman Niskel, a second. My Councilman Gudes, all in favor? Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Just shorten that, this meeting today.
There you go.
So if there's anybody here who's waiting to hear, speak, or talk on it, it's gonna be coming back in January then?
Okay, yeah. And we'll state that, which is if anybody was here for item number 17 and was gonna speak on it, FY, it's just been moved to January 30th of next year. You may still speak on it today, but just to let y'all know that. Councilman Gudes, did you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir. I have a note for school chair, Tampa mayor, she's gonna be a president, David. She did come in early, she had a proposal, and we're gonna reschedule it at a later date, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. May I have a motion to remove that, I assume?
Yeah, motion to remove.
We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And then next, we're gonna ask Chief Dugan to come up here, if you would, sir. And Councilman Carlson, you also wanted to move up item number 16. I want to make sure we have two commendations here. Councilman, who's your individual who has to leave early? Okay, well, whenever they get here, if you could just let me know and then we'll proceed and then we'll take it with the commendations as they go. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning, council. Brian Dugan, your chief of police. You know, since we had the issues about the bike stops, the police department has returned to do an annual report. So I just wanted to kind of update you what's going on with it. But before, you know, I want to remind everybody, the mission of the Tampa Police Department is to reduce crime, improve the quality of life through community partnerships. And that's just a quick summary of it. And so, you know, we're very sensitive at the police department about bike stop issues and things like that. And so I want to point out that we have yet to receive any complaints about the bike stop issues. It tells me that there isn't any. But yesterday, I spoke with Avett Lewis, the president of the NAACP, and asked her if she had received any complaints and she had none. So I think that's important, that we're not receiving complaints on it. And so to give a big picture on the bike stops, and you have some of this in your packet, is when you look at bike stops, we had over, between our productivity and calls for service, we had 664,000 calls last year or documented contacts with the citizens. Now just think how many millions of undocumented contacts where you give people, you know, directions or you come in contact with somebody at a restaurant and everything. But of our documented contacts, bicycle stops are less than half a percent of what we do. Just to bring some context about bike stops, because I think that's been misconstrued over the years, that we're just out there stopping everybody and anybody. And so I just wanted to give some highlights to, give some perspective to bicycle stops and what we do at the Tampa Police Department. When you look at Tampa's crime rate compared to other cities, we're 20% lower than the statewide average. We're 51% lower than for cities that average above 250,000 in population. When you look at our arrest rate, our adult arrest index has dropped by 38% in the last decade compared to a statewide average of 27%. Our juvenile arrest index has dropped by 68% in the last decade compared to the statewide average of 54%. The clearance rate, how many cases we're making arrests and that we're clearing them, we're having a 38%, 38.7% better than the average of other cities out there. So I think it's very important to give some perspective on how successful we have been in reducing crime. So when we look at the bike stop data, we conducted 1,000 less bike stops over the last 12 months than we did last and the year before. It's a 28%, 24.8% decrease. Our citations are down 40% compared to the last 12 months. Let's talk about the demographics because I think that's what's, you know, that's the elephant in the room or whatever we want to say, whatever the saying is. Let's look at the demographics. So we've done 1,000 less bike stops while arresting and citing fewer blacks and more right whites. I can't answer that. I don't know why we're citing less black people and citing more white people. But that's just, the numbers are what they are. When you look at our arrests and citations, when you look at citations, we are down 52% and we are up 50%. We're down 52% for black people and we're up 50% for white people. Now, what that is, when it comes to issuing citations, there's 57 black people that were cited and 27 white people. And so, but the numbers, they're, for some reason, we're citing more white people than we are black people this year. When you look at bike lights, because that is the big issue, most of these stops are done at night because that's when the majority of the crime is taking care, taking place. And so we have people who do not have bike lights and that's most of the reasons why they're being stopped. But we need to help fix that. So it's about changing behavior and it's about educating people. So what we did is we are working with FDOT and the On Bikes group and we are issuing bicycle lights to people who do not have them. And so, you know, we have given out 64% increase. We gave out over 300 bicycle lights in the last year. So that's what we're trying to do, is issue that type of stuff. And it's about education and prevention, but it's also, the main issue is about reducing crime. And so you have, in your packet, in the back, you have some metadata there where there's a large number of information, you know, as far as numbers and arrests. I can go on more, but I guess now I think I'm to the point where, what type of questions do you have?
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Morning, chief.
Good morning.
Appreciate all this information. So I know the big issue, you know, originally was sort of pretext, you know, that stopping for the lights was really just a pretext and that sort of thing. I think we're past that. That was several years ago and I'm glad to see that these numbers have dropped and kind of balanced out. But I wonder two things. Number one, what other issue, what other reasons, probable cause or what have you, would the officers have for stopping somebody other than the lack of lights, unless it's, you know, hot pursuit or something like that? But I mean, is there any other sort of standard reason? Number one, and number two is, it looks like we're only handing out lights to about 10% of the folks, almost actually exactly 10% of the folks that we're stopping. So what can we, what can we do, council or budget or what have you, to increase that 90% and hand out lights to everybody we stop?
Well, you know, we're at the mercy of who gives us the lights. You know, we don't really have the budget to buy them. And so that's why we rely on, there's a group called On Bikes. I'm sure all of you are familiar with them. They give us lights. Our bike squad does bicycle rodeos with kids where we give out helmets and bike lights for them, fix and repair their bikes. And we've gotten FDOT grants. So really what we need is that grant money and that support to get more lights and more bike, you know, for us to be able to hand them out.
What's a total of light cost, just so in case somebody's watching, they want to step up?
You know, I don't have that information as what they cost.
Only five, 10 bucks?
Yeah.
And then the other, the first question was, what other reason would the officers be stopping folks if it's not for lights?
You know, it just depends. They're riding down the wrong side of the street. They're riding in the middle of the street, going against traffic. They're weaving in and out of traffic. I mean, the thing is, you have to be on the street, you know, sidewalks don't count. It has to be a traffic infraction and obviously has to be illegal traffic infraction. So if they're not weaving in and out of streets and they don't have the, it's really what it comes down to is when you're on a road and you're weaving in and out of traffic, going against traffic, you don't have a bike light at night. That's the other thing that people need to realize, that you need a bike light at night. But other than that, you know, really the main traffic violations.
Okay. And finally, it looks like you're doing this annually now, this report?
You know, I thought last year, I was not requested by council last year to come back. I think the issue is that it was already on the, I think there's a communication issue. It wasn't, there was no request last year when I came here to come back to council.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think it's a good report and a good for the community to hear. So in case there's some perception that this is, you know, out of control, that you have it under control. So I don't think it's a bad thing. But the other thing I've always been curious about is a breakdown geographically. And just in terms, and I didn't, I didn't know if it's on there or not, but just in terms of, I don't know how you guys like to do it, zones, districts, what have you, but I think it would be interesting to just see, you know, geographically where that focuses. But other than that, I think y'all are doing a good job.
Well, some of the issues, some of the challenges, the request that wasn't made by this particular council, is it was very generic as to what they wanted. So you tend to bring what you're asked for. But in anticipation that I might get that question...
That's why you're chief.
I'll refrain from commenting on that one. So if you look at the green dots on the map there, that is, and this is for, you know, from September, October of last year to September 30th of this year, if you look at the green dots, those are bicycle stops. If you look where the red blocks are, those are grids. Those have 43 or more Big Five offenses, which we consider an aggravated assault, any type of gun violence, auto burglary, auto theft, robbery, and home burglaries. And so you can see the generate, and then if it's a yellow grid, it has 32 or more Big Five offenses. And those are the main five crimes that we try to focus on. So when you look at where a lot of these stops are taking place, it's a lot, that's where most of the criminals are using bicycles to commit crimes. I can even give you a couple of examples, if you like, on some of the bike stops and some of the arrests that we've made.
But the flip side of that is, out of 3,000 stops, you've got 148 arrests. I imagine some of those are rather misdemeanors and that sort of thing. I don't know. I guess I'm a little confused. Are we still using bike stops as a crime-stopping tool?
Well, you know, it is a one of our...
I thought it was a safety thing.
Well, it's about crime reduction. And that's what, the way I've looked at it, you know, this started five years ago and three chiefs ago. I look at it as a crime-reduction tool. I don't get complaints from anyone about how we're doing our bike stops anymore. So, you know, we had back on March 16th at 1:00 a.m. at Florida and Paris, we stopped somebody who had no light on their bike and he had a warrant for sexual battery and kidnapping out of Ohio. Is that the type of person we want on our streets? I can show you a chart that will match the times of the bike stops and it will show you also the times of violent crimes. And that's really what this is all about. But they have to be legal stops. That is the big thing, is it has to be a legal stop for us to stop and talk to somebody. You know, we had at 2:00 a.m. in Solfer Springs, two subjects on a bike observed with a handgun and we made the arrest. 9:00 p.m., 3315 North Nebraska, subject shooting at each other, fled on bikes, and arrest was made, two handguns recovered. We've had an occasion, we had two kids on a bicycle. One was riding on the handlebars. They approached another kid who was on a bicycle. They shot, robbed them, and killed them for his bicycle. I think some of those things are being lost in the narrative of how we're doing policing.
Nothing else, sir? Okay. Councilman Gudes, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Bingham, I see some of your points and from a person who's made bike stops and worked with other colleagues, some of these gentlemen in the audience, I think it's all about philosophy. And I think the philosophy has kind of changed now, the way we do bike stops, or how we handle business at the police department. Because at one point, we were doing business one way and now we get new chiefs, we do business another way. So to me, it's all about philosophy and all about how the command level is sharing that philosophy down to what I call the middle management level, down to the troops. So I believe it's all about philosophy, how we police. And you have a good supervisor, that good supervisor watches his troops and understands when that philosophy is going a different way. And sometimes you have other supervisors have a different caveat to the philosophy and have to be reeled in when things get awry, which these bicycle stops got awry many, many years ago. But I think the philosophy has changed. Would you agree, chief?
Yeah, well, I think what it is, I think the department has evolved. And, you know, if you recall when I took over, I said I wasn't here to reinvent TPD. We've had some very strong chiefs of police and we have a very good relationship, but our relationship with community evolves. It's an ongoing process. And so, yeah, it's part of its philosophy. I think we're much more aware of how we police, but I think it's a nationwide trend. You know, you look at the protests that have happened over the years and just recently, we haven't had many protests nationally on police. I think police departments are getting better in how they police. I think the fact that we have a city council who's engaged, I'm engaged, our mayor's engaged. I mean, our mayor won, what'd she get, 73% of the vote? If they were unhappy with TPD, I don't think she would have been elected.
Well, you know, gentlemen, you know, I was away last week and you look at different places, how they police. You know, the first thing I noticed with some other colleagues, when we got off the bus, we looked at the officers, the Chicago Police Department, which is a huge police department, huge. And you look, the first thing I could see is the dress attire. And I looked at our dress attire and the presence that we have versus, I just looked at the Chicago PD and I was like, man, those uniforms are so dingy and dirty. And it's just a presence that you have to give. And I just think that we do some things good, sometimes we don't. But from what it's worth, I think that, you know, policing is an ongoing method and things do change. And I'm glad that we are now looking at, when things arrive, we try to make those changes. So I'm happy with that this time.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Councilman Carlson.
Thank you for presenting this. It's been an important issue in the community. I thank you for presenting and for giving us the data, even, especially if you weren't asked to do it. It's important for transparency purposes and I appreciate you doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, my concern, if you give me a few liberties, is we keep coming up here, we, I keep coming up here and previous chiefs. My concern is, you know, I'm all about accountability. On May 2nd, the day after Mayor Buck, or Mayor Castor was sworn in, I fired three police officers because of the way they were handling themselves and the way they were treating members of the community. I'm very big on accountability. But one of my jobs as chief of police is to have the back of the officers when they're doing good. And for us to keep coming up here and discussing something that took place back five years ago or four and a half years ago, my concern is that the police officers are gonna start feeling like they don't have the support of council. And at some point, I have to stand up for them and say, we're doing a phenomenal job. And we can keep beating this horse or this drum, but, and I will come back if that's your request, but I wonder if this is not starting to tire out. But I wonder if this is not starting to tire out.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, we can look at it two ways, chief, um, I, I often encourage staff, uh, to come up here and give reports so we can talk about the great things that are happening in our city. And so, you know, the flip side of what you just said is, you just gave a report that says things are improving, things have improved, you know, greatly o- over the last five years. That's important to report to the community. Um, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't feel like anybody's beating you up on this issue.
I don't think you're, I'm, I'm worried about the perception that the officer is gonna feel.
Okay.
We're talking about less than one percent of what they do.
Right, which is, which is really important, that's a statistic I've never heard before. And I think that now that you've made that presentation, I know I've learned more, and the community's learned more, anybody who's watching, and, and the, and the newspaper will hopefully print that.
Well, I pointed, I pointed that out last year.
Well, I wouldn't hear.
Okay.
But anyway, um, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and, uh, you know, we don't want, we don't want any animosity, we, you know, week after week, I think we try and show TPD and, and TFR and all of our employees how much we appreciate them, we appreciate you, we appreciate them. Um, it's our job to ask questions and, and our job to be the voice of the community, and, uh, uh, you know, sometimes we do hear these things, so it's important that we continue to look at them. But, uh, anyway, thank you for what you do.
No, and I, I appreciate that, but it's not about me, it's about the men and women, like any praise that the Tampa Police Department gets, that people give to me, I didn't do it, I don't deserve it. It's the men and women out there on the street who are putting their lives on the line that deserve the credit, and that is my concern.
Of course. Anyone else?
I just want to thank the chief for being straightforward and, uh, presenting it, uh, like a real human being and saying the facts are the facts, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and, and just for my own part, I mean, I, I, I think you know, uh, chief, how I feel about our men and women in uniform, and I, and I tell you that if anybody, uh, up here, and nobody, and nobody has, uh, but was ever to be disrespectful, I know that, that, you know, I would, I would certainly speak out in that regard. And I think before I speak out, I'm sure that our former police officer here would also speak out as well, uh, so that's just, uh, my sentiments in that regard, a hundred and ten percent, but thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and now, um, Councilman Gude, uh, you had a couple of commendations you wanted to do, sir? Sure, yeah, and, uh, Councilman Carlson, I assume that, uh, with your, but in other words, is he okay to wait five minutes, I assume, just making sure, thank you. Yes, sir.
You're standing right, right here, and Mr. Barnum, please, you sound... We're gonna keep this thing moving. Morning, council. We, we're gonna do, uh, items two and three at one time, uh, these folks know one another, uh, we're all, uh, community people. Uh, this morning, I have Mr. Joel Barnum, who is the president of the Northeast Civic Association, uh, that's the north side of Fortieth Street and Hillsborough Avenue. And he's also taken on extra tasks by also helping with the Live Oak Square Community Association, which is also to the west a little bit, between about, uh, Thirty-Fourth and, uh, north of Hillsborough. But he also was tasked with kind of helping another community group on the south side of Hillsborough Avenue by Williams Park. So Mr. Barnum, uh, in his, in, in his retirement, uh, some of his health conditions, he's still out there fighting for our communities. Then we have the lovely couple of Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Robinson, Joseph and Robinson, Norma Robinson, and they're phenomenal in our Sulphur Springs. They've been up there, and you know the, the issues we have with Sulphur Springs. And I, I, I wanted to make sure that you both, all three of you, get your justice, because you've been working hard on the trail a long, long time. Tampa City Council, we give these commendations, but I felt in my office, I had to do a little something different. And when what we've come up with, we, we, we call our commendation, this is our, our community champions award, because that's what you are, you're champions of the community. You're fighting day in and day out, you're serving the people, and when people talk about leaders and certain people, I always tell people, no, those are not my leaders. My leaders are those community association presidents who are out there every day working, doing the small things to try to make a difference in our small children's lives, our young adults. And sometimes, a lot of times, our seniors as well, so those are the things I, I look at. So this morning, I like to give all three of you an accommodation. Mr. Barnum, you've been a soldier out there for me, and I can't deny that, presented to Mr. Joel Barnum, our community champion. In the honor of your investment of the Tampa community and the years of dedicated service, Tampa City Council recognizes you as a true community champion. As president of the Northeast, uh, Northeast, uh, Terrace Square, uh, community and small business owner, you have demonstrated true concern of the community through your dedication and the hard work on behalf of the citizens of Tampa. Mr. Barnum, thank you for your work and your blessings.
Thank you, sir.
Again, we have, uh, Mr. Joseph Robinson and Ms. Norma Robinson. In honor of your service and commitment to the, to the Tampa community, your endeavors in promoting and encouraging redevelopment, restoration, and safe and healthy environment for the social and community is outstanding, and we are so privileged to have you among us. Again, I thank you for your service to our community and to that Sulphur Springs, we've got some things coming up that way, I've got some things I want to do up there. I know we've got that railroad bureau there, we're gonna try to get that done, uh, to beautify Sulphur Springs, people can know that we're coming to Sulphur Springs. So keep up the good work, and I'm there with you all the way, congratulations.
To our great city council, you guys are doing a great job, I've watched you over the course of time, and, uh, we applaud all that you do. Surely to our law enforcement, I, as a community leader, try to work with, uh, uh, our chief, Dugan, and his staff, and we're just so proud to work with the, uh, betterment, uh, the leadership of Tampa at large. And all that we do in Northeast communities, it makes the whole community better for everybody, we don't want to leave any part of Tampa left behind. In order to make Tampa a great city, all parts of Tampa have to be worked on, and it just so happened that we're working in the East Tampa community, and we're thankful to, uh, Councilman Gude, uh, for all that he's shown us down through the years, not just as he's been a council member, but he's been working with us for many years, so we appreciate him, we appreciate you guys, and we just thank everybody, uh, this wonderful, working to make Tampa better.
I'm gonna say ditto, I want to thank city council, thank Councilman Gude. Um, we want to thank the police department that has worked, uh, so much in Sulphur Springs, because, you know, at one point, we had, um, serious problem up there, but we applaud the police department and all the citizens who are working with us to make this a better place. We want to thank, um, all the community leaders that are working to make Tampa a better place for everyone, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you.
Anyone from council, Councilman Dingfelder?
Mr. Barnum, you, you and I don't know each other, but I've, I've heard about you, and, uh, if Gude says you're a good man, you're a good man.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Robinson's, uh, I've watched for many years, and, and by strange coincidence, I happened to be up there yesterday, uh, at the, uh, at the museum, and, um, Ms. Norma showed me, showed me around, and I was next door at the Stepping Stones, and they're doing fantastic things there, and, and, um, as I drive around Sulphur Springs, I can see the improvements, and you guys have been a big part of it, so thanks, thanks to all three of you, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir. That's fine. Sorry.
You know, I, I try and be a lot of places in this wonderful city, and every time I go to places, I see all three of you. And I thank you for what you're doing for our community and making it great, thank you very much.
Counselor.
I, I just want to say thank you, all three of you, you know, it's very easy to say, I'm leaving this place, because it's not the right place to be in. Years ago, it started that way, when everybody wanted to build duplexes, and then duplexes became vacant and overgrown, and it, it became not the way that life should be led. But because of the three of you, you stayed, and you nurtured, and you taught, and you helped the young kids, you can't change anything unless you have the young kids on your side. And you've done that, and, and that's where life starts to change, not when you're forty-five and fifty years old, when you're twelve and thirteen years old, that you're set in mind of what you want to be because of the guidance that you've been receiving from the neighborhoods, from your neighborhood. So that neighborhood is turning around and getting much better, I've seen new houses come up where no one would live before. I've seen changes in the neighborhood, I've seen businesses start up, and because of you folks, not I or anyone else in government, you're the ones that made it happen, not us, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you guys very much, and I'm, I, I always, uh, love so many of the commendations that Councilman Gude does, because I, I always think that, uh, commendations are meant often to, to honor people who should have been honored twenty years ago. You know, there's so many people in the community who just, uh, you know, bust their behind every single day, working for people who don't have a voice, and, and to give people who don't have a voice a voice, and that's what y'all do, so thank you guys very much, and, and, uh, whether it's, uh, East Tampa, Sulphur Springs, or wherever it may be, there's so many people out there working. I know, I'm glad that, uh, Councilman Dingfelder mentioned Stepping Stones, that's a, a great organization, I visit, I remember talking with Councilman Gude about that during the, during the campaign, in fact, and he's always been a big supporter. And the museum out there, I love to go out there, that's a, a nice, um, uh, effort that, that shows, uh, history that a lot of people don't know about. And I know that y'all have done some really nice exhibits, I remember there was one not too long ago on, I believe it was, uh, uh, that area during a reconstruction and afterwards, and just really neat stuff. So I, I thank you all for all your work, thank you, thank you. Okay, and, uh, and, and Councilman Carlson, um, I know you want to move sixteen up, and I, I, there's no problem with that. The presentation itself, just so that we have a, um, a, a timeframe, about how long roughly will that take, more or less?
Should take ten minutes.
Okay, great, and, and before, I want to make sure, um, with, uh, I see we have, uh, Sal here for, uh, where is that? Item seven and ten, um, sir, are, are you okay with going after this, or, or, you sure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure, I don't want to assume, okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you all for indulging me to present today, um, do I need to state my name? Bill Carlson, Tampa City Council member, District Four. Uh, because of sunshine laws, I'm not allowed to, to present to my colleagues outside of, uh, this forum, so I wanted to just, uh, see if you would indulge me for a few minutes. I've got here today, um, my legislative aide, uh, Jason Marlowe, who has, uh, two master's degrees and has been helping me put together this presentation. I also have, uh, Dr. Moaz Limayem, who is, um, the, the dean of the USF Luma College of Business.
Who bowls.
How do we turn on the, how do we get on the thing? You, can you all see the slides, okay? Can you just grab me a print position for that? Oh, I see it up there, never mind. Um, so the, the, what we did is, we looked at, um, we looked at trying to create a scorecard for Tampa, how do we measure our success? How do we figure out whether we're doing well or not? And so the first thing to ask is, um, is, uh, why would we measure? The reason to measure is because what measures, what you measure gets done, and so if we measure things, if we highlight them, then hopefully that will get done in the future. These are what I call vanity rankings, there are lots of vanity, vanity rankings about Tampa and other cities. Uh, the reason why I call them vanity rankings is because they're done by publications, websites, that want to get publicity for themselves. So they say, uh, here's the top ten list for whatever city, and then hopefully the cities and people in those cities will post them all over the place, and it will send links and hits to those websites. And they're fun to use, and they're important if we're trying to build a brand for Tampa, so, uh, we all want to be Tampa boosters, we all want to say positive things about Tampa, and it's great to post those. But if we're looking introspectively at what we really need to address, we wouldn't look at those as much. Uh, the other thing is that, the, the way they're put together sometimes is not very scientific, and also, they're looking at the MSA, the entire region, not just the city of Tampa. So, we looked at, at, by the way, I also worked with Alex, who's, uh, uh, the, uh, the city council intern, who is in the USF, uh, economics program, and so he helped us with this as well, although he's not able to be here today. What we did is, we looked at the best cities in the world, um, that, and how they measure themselves. You all may know, I, I spent five years in Singapore, a, a year at the MBA program studying Singapore's model, then four years in part consulting the government of Singapore. And we can't copy the Singapore model, but in nineteen eighty-four, Singapore said they wanted to have the same per capita income as Switzerland by the year two thousand. And they not only hit that, but about three years ago, they hit the highest per capita income in the world, and they continue to do well on lots of different measures. But the thing is, we need to look at the measures and figure out, uh, how we, how we should be successful. There are hundreds of key metrics we should use, we could use, uh, but what we did is, we talked not only to, uh, Dr. Liman at USF, but we also talked to Bieber at U- University of Florida, we talked to economists at the Florida Chamber Foundation, others, and we studied how other cities measure themselves. And you could create a very complicated model with hundreds of measures, uh, but what we, what we did, uh, with Moaz's advice was, just pick seven, and say, seven is an easy number for people to remember, they're basic measures, and there are a lot of things that are input into that. So I'll hit them one at a time, and we compare the numbers to Florida cities, the major Florida cities, and also to, um, uh, benchmarked cities. And so I'll go through this, and there's a summary page at the beginning of each one, but in terms of per capita income, if you look at the top of the chart, the yellow line is Fort Lauderdale. And it's important to kind of look at the shape of the lines, you don't have to necessarily look at the numbers, you all can study those later. Uh, Tampa is a distant second to Fort Lauderdale, uh, but we're above, uh, the other peer cities in Florida, Miami is way at the bottom, and that's a trend that you'll kind of see throughout here. So in terms of per capita income, we do very well, some of these numbers we do well, and some we don't do well, but the idea is to look at where we are today, because if we don't do well, that's an opportunity for the future. This is, um, as we dig down into the numbers, and we can dig down into any of them, and, uh, with USF's help, we can do predictive analytics. Uh, but one of the reasons why Tampa does really well in per capita income is that we have a higher percentage of wealthy people, um, especially millionaires. So Tampa has seven point three percent of people who make more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, where the state of Florida averages four point eight, and St. Pete is four point five, just to give an example. Fort Lauderdale also has a very high number of millionaires. In terms of the benchmark cities, though, when we picked Atlanta, Austin, and Charlotte, because Tampa Chamber just got back from Charlotte benchmarking, we often compare ourselves to those cities as peer cities. And later, you'll see a comparison to all cities, but, um, it's just an interesting comparison to look at them. You see a, a, a change, though, Tampa now, compared to those peer cities, is way at the bottom, and, uh, Atlanta's at the top, then Austin, then Charlotte. So if we're setting a per capita income goal, for example, where should it be? Should we try to be, uh, best in the state, should we try to be best in the United States, or should we be, try to be better than our peer cities? As I mentioned, Singapore picked Switzerland, um, as their comparison back in nineteen eighty-four.
Bill, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
And it's relevant to all these charts, um, when you say Tampa, are we within the city limits, or is this Hillsborough County?
Yeah, sorry if I didn't say that, uh, one of the differences also than the vanity rankings is that we're only looking at the city of Tampa. And by the way, the data that we used is census data, so anybody can look it up, it's available readily online. And, um, we, we, the Great Recession officially ended in two thousand nine, and so we figured two thousand eight, two thousand nine were an anomaly, and so we picked two thousand ten through two thousand seventeen. There is two thousand eighteen data, but it's estimated data, and we wanted to use data that the, at least the Census Department was very confident in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
So here's an interesting thing, uh, you know, our researchers found, and, and again, if we dig into the data, we can find, uh, different pieces of it to look at. But this is inequality by gender, um, St. Petersburg, for example, has a three thousand dollar gap between the average amount that men earn versus women. Um, Tampa's is nine thousand, and so as we're looking at, uh, ways that we can improve our economy and so, policy solutions, you know, understanding some of the numbers behind the numbers is important. Uh, a better ranking of, uh, of income is to look at median household income, because per capita gets drawn off by the millionaires in our community. And if you look at this chart, Tampa is third from the bottom, uh, kind of consistently, uh, Fort Lauderdale the top, uh, then the state of Florida, Jacksonville, St. Pete. It's interesting, when we look at MSA data, uh, one of the reasons why Tampa does well is because we have St. Pete in our MSA. And a lot of times, we think of, of St. Pete as kind of a little brother, but it, for the MSA, the regional data, St. Pete helps us. Some areas, we do better than them, but a lot of areas, they do better than we do. And we're lucky that, uh, Miami is so low, because they're the, kind of the laggard in numbers like this.
Jacksonville gets the benefit of being a whole county.
Yeah.
Probably would.
And there are all different kinds... And there are all different kinds of ways you can slice and dice, but it's interesting to look at that and we represent the city of Tampa, so that's why we looked at the city of Tampa only. Um, then we looked at median household income compared to our benchmark cities. And you see that, um, Austin is way ahead, Charlotte, uh, the United States average, Atlanta, and, uh, and, and even the state of Florida. So if we're trying to figure out what, it's not so important where we've been, it's to try to figure out what's our goal for the future. If we set a goal for median household income or per capita income, what should the goal be? Then we looked at middle class and, uh, Pew Foundation defines it as, I think, thirty-five to a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Uh, the census data, the closest we could get was fifty to a hundred and fifty. And so we looked at that. The important thing to look at here is kind of the shape of the curves. Our middle class has been growing, uh, but the rate of growth in St. Pete and to certainly say the state of Florida is higher than ours. And, uh, the, it's, the trend nationally in many areas, the middle class has been shrinking. And depending on where you start and end the measurement, ours could, could have shrunk as well. But, um, but if you look at it holistically, um, the middle class is staying kind of stagnant. It's a small rate of growth, and so it's something that we want to look at. Um, another important factor that is talked about by a lot of people standing here at this podium is poverty. And if you look at the chart, Tampa has the second highest poverty rate of major cities in, in Florida. Uh, again, we're lucky that Miami is, is a, a laggard here. Uh, but compared to, look at St. Pete is way on the bottom. St. Pete has aggressively addressed their poverty issue over the last few years. And, uh, even among the other cities there, this is pulling out the number of people who are, who are below the poverty line. And then compared to, um, just the last year's numbers compared to other major cities, again, ours is pretty high except for compared to Miami. Uh, then looking at the unemployment rate, and there's some recent data, as I said, but, but it's not completely updated. If you look at our, um, our unemployment rate, it's very low. It's below, when I studied economics, below six percent is, is below the natural rate of unemployment and you shouldn't really go too far below that. Uh, but look at St. Pete's, it's, it's just above four percent. Now, all of these are lower, but the, the important thing to do is compare, uh, Tampa to the other major cities. And in terms of unemployment rate, at least as of two thousand seventeen, our unemployment rate was higher. Again, it's not about looking back, it's about figuring out what our goals might be for the future. Home ownership rate, which many people have spoken about here, the mayor's got a task force, we are looking at homeownership rate. Um, all the way on the right, you'll see Singapore, and again, we can't copy the Singapore model, we shouldn't, uh, but theirs is almost ninety-two percent. It's a, it's an outlier, uh, but it's an important part of their economy that people can, that people own their own homes. Um, St. Pete's is about fifty-eight percent. The state of Florida is sixty-five. Tampa's is, uh, is forty-eight. And we had a group here a few months ago that presented and said the African-American rate is forty-two percent. So we, we, this is an area that we can easily address. The Tampa Chamber has a task force focused on homeownership. We have the CRAs, we also have, uh, the tools within the city to address it. Again, the fact that we're at fifty, forty-eight percent doesn't look particularly good, but it gives us a long way to grow if we set a higher goal for the future. This is one that, it's too bad Chief Dugan is not here anymore, but thank you to the men and women of our police force. Um, we have the best, uh, violent crime rate in the state. Um, I met with the, uh, chief of staff a couple days ago and, uh, of course, he and the mayor know this, know this, um, number very well. They use data analytics to analyze how to reduce crime rate. And they're using the same tools to look at some of these other issues alongside whatever we do, uh, but they aggressively reduce the crime rate, which is, which, which is why it's so low. If we take those same kind of analytical tools and focus on some of the other issues, um, and work together, we should be able to address them as well. Educational attainment, um, we are higher than other cities in Florida, but we're way below our benchmark, uh, cities that we compare against. So, uh, just to end, uh, Moaz gave us this quote, "The Amazons of the world go beyond the rankings and the rhetoric. They look at the facts and they know the facts better than we do." So when big companies are looking at Tampa or even small businesses are looking to relocate here, they'll listen to the vanity rankings that we give them, uh, but more importantly, they have access to the same census data that we do and they'll look at their real numbers and decide whether this is a good place for them or not. And so by looking at the, the numbers, we can make a big difference in trying to move these along. Um, also, Tampa Chamber, when we were in Charlotte a, a week or two ago, uh, we met with a person in charge of a foundation who had done, uh, an, an investigation of poverty ten years ago. They said, "We looked at the issue, we aggressively addressed it, and if you look at the numbers, uh, Charlotte has really done better than us on that." Some conclusions, um, my recommendation is that the policy and economic development efforts need to focus on reducing poverty because if you look at the broad spectrum of the numbers, it's our, it's our biggest issue. Also, we need to grow the middle class at a higher rate. And the other thing that I would recommend and I hope would be an outcome of this eventually is that we would have a scorecard that we can use to measure where we are and where we want to go and set some goals. The next step would be to define a scorecard and goals, uh, get community input on it, work with maybe USF to do predictive analytics on what the policy applications might be to change it and then create a plan. And we've got two hats on with CRA and city council that we can address that. Um, one, one last tool, this is, uh, the seven metrics on the left as of two thousand seventeen. The next column is Tampa's number. And then we pulled the best city in Florida and then we pulled the best city in the United States, different than our benchmark cities. And so then in the right column, there's a twenty, thirty goal. And, uh, what I would ask you all to do is maybe we could schedule a month or two from now to come back and look at, do you think these are the right seven measures? We can always add other measures underneath them, but do you think if we had a simple scorecard with fewer than ten things, are these the right measures? And then, um, what would our, what should our goal be for the future? And I set up a, a just basic website, tappascorecard.com, which has this whole presentation on it, if you all want to look at it more. There's also a Survey Monkey survey that has that chart that I just showed. So anybody watching this on TV, if you have, uh, any recommendations that you want to give, uh, just fill in the blanks on those and tell us whether you think these are the right measures or not. So thank you for indulging me.
And thank you for that, uh, just before I, I take, uh, comments, just, uh, thank you, Councilman Carlson, for that hard work. I, I mean it. That obviously took a lot of time and, and to Jason and your whole office and, uh, Dean, everybody, thank you very much for that.
And thank you to Councilman Citro for letting us use his intern as well.
I hope I get it back now.
Any, anybody wish to comment? Uh, Council?
Again, thank you for the report, very nice. I, I look at things a little differently. I'm not trying to be different, but I, I look at things and, uh, from what I read in the past, that Tampa was the fastest growing city east of the Mississippi River. I don't know if that's correct or not. I think it was only second to west of the Mississippi River, which was Phoenix. And I, I look at numbers only as a number. That doesn't mean, because that number that we talked about in life doesn't understand where we all come from. So when you look at Tampa, why is Fort Lauderdale and St. Pete others better than we are as far as income? I would have to say because they're next to the water. They might have a benefit there in the beginning of life, but they also have the highest suicide rate, if I remember in my courses in criminology. Water creates suicide, for whatever reason, I don't know why. I look back and, uh, look at the people that I went to school with, and when I went to school, I never went to high school. I went to Jefferson. Why do I say that? I say that because we had to compete against the only two other high schools. Hillsborough and Plant, they had center track for track. We didn't have a track. Yes, we had a run track. We didn't have a baseball diamond in, on campus, yet we had to compete in baseball. A football field full of sandspurs, yet we had to compete in football. The basketball court that we had was an open field until nineteen fifty-four, when finally they built one. So we were the minorities that were left out. But we really were not left out. When you look at that class from the fifties onto the sixties, I guess, and I venture to say they produce more renowned individual, and I'm not talking about myself, I was a complete disaster. I admit it from the first go. But we had guys like Dr. Dennis Perfello, renowned heart surgeon. We had lawyers, renowned lawyers. We had anything you wanted to stay in, anything you want. And I'd go back and I'd trace it to one thing, parenting. They taught us the right way. They taught us how to do it. They taught us what to do and how to do it. And when I go back and I realize that we looked about the middle class, what do we have in Tampa in the forties and fifties? Twelve thousand cigar workers. What wage were they earning? Minimum. Did they work in air-conditioned places? No. Did they work in places that were harsh? Yes. Did they ever complain? No. They wanted to do one thing, success for their family, not for themselves. Their goal, they knew they were going to be sacrificed, but it was for their families. And I go back and I continue to look at life, why did Miami prosper so quick in Fort Lauderdale? Again, the immigrants, this time with some capital because they came from other parts of the world, mainly South America, Colombia and Venezuela. They had El Guido, El De Nero. We didn't have that. Why? Because they were close to the water. Why? Because there was already immigrants there from Spanish speaking. Yet, at that time in life, in the forties and fifties, Tampa had more Cubans than any place in Florida. We don't have that now. So what I'm saying is, we're becoming what everybody already is. But we're not lagging behind. It's where you started and where that syndrome is now is where you s, you can pretty well pinpoint where you were at in life. So those numbers are correct. I'm not dotting the numbers. But you have to go back and tell me what happened when you stirred the parenting era before you and how you got where you're at today. So although they're behind, I think Tampa's done damn well in everything they've done. I'll never compare the city with another city, never. And I never compare myself with my, anybody else. I am what I am. I don't belong in anybody's league. I do what I think is right. But I, maybe I'm different, but I don't think I am different. I think I'm different because I say I'm different, not because I want to be different. So when I look at life, the attaining of a person's ability to succeed is not what you do yourself, it's how you're nurtured and brought up. When I was brought up, like most of us at Jefferson, not only do we have the parents, we had the whole family looking at us. We had one diamond, Cusco Park, produced two Hall of Fame baseball players, Al Lopez and Tony DeRosa. Maybe the only baseball park in the country's got two Hall of Famers. But I'm not talking about sports. Certainly sports is part of it, but it's also a detriment because it takes away from you wanting to learn. You think you're going to make it to the big leagues and you're not going to do that. One in two hundred thousand or so make it. But again, I want to thank you for it. I understand what you're saying, but you have to go back to an era. When I was in school, I didn't know English for two years. They told me not to come back the first year. I used to jump out the window and go home because I don't know what the hell they were talking about. And like me, there was half the class that way. But we wanted to get out from where we were, not to better ourselves because our parents nurtured us to be a good citizen. That's all it was about. It wasn't about money. We look at things in life, everything is about money, the income. I understand that part, but you better look at the people that you're creating in life and what they're doing. It's not all about money. It's about your life. There's a beginning and there's an end to everything, nothing lasts forever. Not one thing lasts forever, no matter what species you are, what building you are, what, nothing lasts forever. When you look at sports, does the highest team always win the series? Absolutely not. So how do you compare them? It's by the team who has the best players that want to go out and succeed, not the best played players. It's the one, the desire that you have, not to fall, not to make a mistake. And when you fall, get up and do it again. The losers are the ones that never get up. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Naskalko.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, uh, excellent job, excellent presentation, uh, learned a lot of stuff. So the first thing I always do is, is perhaps my, my research background, but it's to, to say, "What's the source of this?" And so on your notes, it says, "Source, American Community Survey." I said, "What the heck's the American Community Survey?" And I'm very impressed to see the American Community Survey is the federal government. Um, it, this is, this all came out of census data, uh, from the annual census and, and that sort of thing. So I think it's a very objective, uh, source of, uh, of information. In contrast, you call them, what'd you call them? Vanity, the vanity studies or whatever? I, I always love chuckle at those, you know what I mean? Because it's kind of like, what are the, what's the source of that? We're the best city for a suntan or something? I don't know. You know, it's just kind of, but anyway, so, um, so I do, I do always chuckle at those and take them with a, a grain of salt. Excellent presentation, good source. Uh, it's kind of cruel that you made Jason do this as he was preparing for his wedding. Congratulations to Jason and his wife on, on their wedding the other day. But in all seriousness, um, I think this, the best thing I, I grab out of this, and Charlie, um, I agree with many of your comments, um, is that we have a benchmark. And, and I think that it's really, um, excellent that you've identified these, um, to, so we know, you know, as, as far as I'm concerned, I just, I just came back to council, uh, five, you know, May first, we all got sworn in. So this is our starting point. Like you say, we can't, it doesn't do any good for us to look backwards and see the mistakes we made and, you know, like we were talking with the chief, you know, to, uh, a minute ago, you know, looking backwards doesn't, doesn't do us any good. We need to look forward. So, but in order to look forward, you need to know where you're starting at. And I see this as, this is our starting point. I think it's excellent that you, you've done this benchmark. I would hope that every year you come, you know, come back, stand in front of that podium and remind us where, where we are and where, and where we came from in regard to those benchmarks, because today, you know, today is the starting point in that regard. I think building the middle class is really one of the key, one of the key, um, frames that I saw up there. Um, and, and we do need to do that through a variety of ways. And, and one of the things we all have been talking about is affordable housing. Uh, you know, you build your wealth by, by owning a home, uh, in, in many cases, and that's how the middle class in this country, uh, had, had grown over decades. And unfortunately, I think as, as a nation, I think we've taken a little tumble, but as a community, I think we can improve that tremendously. And I think council and the mayor, um, have been focusing on that in a very healthy way for the last three or four months, and we need to continue to do that for the next three and a half years. One slide I didn't see up there, um, I, I thought the, the gender slide was interesting. Uh, I wouldn't have necessarily guessed, you know, guessed that. I, I know we still have a gender disparity. Um, I wouldn't have thought that different cities might vary much. And, and I agree with Charlie also, I don't really get focused on, "We're better than Orlando in this and St. Pete's better than us on that." I mean, I know out of town companies look at that, but really, when I look at the numbers and the difference between us and St. Pete, it's not that big. It's, you know, one percent here, two percent there. Um, you know, so I think, and, and in many ways, I celebrate their successes because in, we are, you know, people will get mad at me for saying it, but, uh, we are Tampa Bay in many ways. And, and outside companies will look at the Bay Area. And yes, I agree with you. We can't fix the whole Bay Area because we are 400,000 people in the City of Tampa City Council. But, so we need to focus on what we can fix ourselves. But at the same time, I celebrate Clearwater, St. Pete. I celebrate all of them. If they're doing a little better than us in some categories, great. Can we learn from them? Yes. And we should. We should go- we should have one of those tours where we go over and look at what they're doing. And they can come over here and look at what we're doing. But in regard to gender, I thought one of the slides we're missing was, and I think it's probably obvious, was race, was racial- did I hit a nerve there? Was racial disparity. And I'm sure there probably is a- is a number in a slide there. And I'm sure there's a big disparity in terms of all of these issues. And we can't leave those out. So with that, you know, good job. Thanks for bringing this forward. Though the other thing I was going to say was that in regard to race, I think one of the things council can't- has been doing and continue to do is WNBE. Because when we talk about a $3 billion Pipes program, okay, we need to make sure that a good portion of that money is spread throughout the entire community, across all gender and racial lines. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Naskalko, then Councilman Sitcher, then Councilman Gudes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Carlson, for bringing this forward. All your work on this and to your legislative aide, Jason, who worked tirelessly on this. The guy's here at 6:30 in the morning and, I mean, the sun's not even up and he's already- the light's on in your office. So looking here at this slide, vanity rankings. And millennials are mentioned twice. And since I'm the lone millennial on this board and have been for over four and a half years, no, I want to tell you a couple of stories. I graduated from USF in December of 2007. And all the friends that I made were from out-of-state, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York and New Jersey. And not a single one stayed after graduation. They either graduated with me in December of '07 or in the spring of 2008. And everybody left. And the one I laughed most about, they went back home. One of them went to Brooksville. And still, to this day, I go, "How did we lose somebody to Brooksville?" He went to work for Lowe's up there. So whatever. Anyways, now he lives in Vero Beach. Everybody left and they said the same thing. I go, "Why are you leaving after moving down here and spending four or five years of your life in the sunshine? You came for the weather or you came for scholarships or whatever it is." They said, "Because Tampa doesn't have what we need. They don't have the jobs that we're looking for. So we're going back home." So my one friend Brett, the guy that went to Brooksville, who's the one that I regularly keep in contact with, will visit Tampa about once a year or so. And when he came back after leaving, he left in 2008 and he came back to visit in 2016. I said, "Well, let me- let me show you what I do." You know, I got elected in '15. I said, you know, "I work in City Hall. Here's the streetcar, here's Curtis Dixon Park," everything that was existing at the time. So I gave him a tour. And he says, "I'm sorry that I left because I want to- I would move back here and bring my kids and walk my dog and whatnot." And I've told this story before up here. But the fact that he said that, and I can convince, you know, one person to come back and say, "Look how much we've changed in these last several years." I think I can, you know, we can sell that message to other people. So fast forward to 2019 and looking at our population growth. I believe it's like 55,000 to 58,000 new people have come to this area. Growing up, I lived near Tampa Bay Mall. And we would go to Tampa Bay Mall, which is no longer there. And you would see somebody you knew, some old man sitting in the food court with nothing to do that you knew, or you'd see friends shopping and whatnot. Now you go to International Mall and you don't recognize anybody. It's all new people. You go down the Riverwalk and you hear different languages. You go to Armature Works on a Friday night and there's 2,000 people. And I, as an elected official, thinking, "Oh, you're going to get stopped everywhere like you would at the grocery store." I can go freely as a ghost and nobody recognizes me and I don't recognize anybody because it's all new people. And when you talk to them, you ask them, "How long have you been here?" "Oh, I moved down here in 2016. I moved down here in 2018. I've lived here six months. I live across the street at the apartments." Whatever. Having a conversation with my mother yesterday, who's been here since 1962, she says Tampa is really on the map. There was a marketing campaign in the early eighties saying Tampa, the next great American city. Mayor Buckhorn brought it up many, many times. But there was a period there where it was stagnant. There was growth, but not like it is now. People are flocking here, especially young people. They're relocating for jobs. They're relocating here because of the neighborhoods, for whatever reasons. But they're coming to Tampa. We're not losing them to Charlotte. We're not losing them to Miami, although Miami has its growth. But as I traveled this state, because I like to take these road trips and see other cities and I like to travel in general when I can, Tampa offers the perfect balance. I had the opportunity to go out-of-state for college and I didn't. I remember taking the LSAT with my friend, again Brett. And we had plans to go to Michigan after we graduated USF. He even went up there and he said, "I found the perfect apartment. I know where we're going to do this and that everything was organized and ready to go." And I remember the conversation that I had with my mother in Ebor City because I thought she was going to kill me. I said, "I don't want to go to law school." For several reasons. And one of them was, "I'm scared that if I leave, I won't come back here." And I love Tampa that much. And this is back in 2008 or so. Two thou- right after graduation. And I'm glad I didn't leave. I started at University of Tampa because I wanted to stay here. And I had to drop out after a year because I couldn't afford it. I went to HCC, I went to USF. I kept it local. But even in those times, when people were leaving, I made it a point to stay here. I said, "Tampa offers the perfect balance." Last time I was in Miami was three and a half years ago. And I remember driving into downtown one Monday morning and having a panic attack going, "This is crazy. Look at the traffic here." You know, I don't even recognize this downtown because I hadn't been down there since I was a kid. I go, "Everything is demolished. Everything is new. Where do I park? Blah, blah, blah." You come down to Tampa and it's so much easier. I mean, it's a perfect balance of the neighborhoods, the history, what's new, the growth, everything. It's- it's just what I need. I don't think I would ever live anywhere else unless I'd retire somewhere. But in your presentation, you've shown the good and the bad, where we need to make improvements. And that's fine. I mean, we need to do these kinds of studies. It can't just be, you know, everything seen through rose-colored glasses, as has been in the last several years. You know, everything is great. Everything is being built, whatnot. I think our time is now. The reason I ran for city council in 2011, when I ran and lost, was because, you know, you could sense, you know, the greatness of what was coming. I mean, we were coming out of the Great Recession, but the interest in Tampa was here in ways that I don't think we've seen since the 1920s, when we had so much growth to begin with almost a century ago. And I ran in 2015 and I won. And I, you know, the people gave me the opportunity and the privilege to do so. But I wanted to be here now. People would tell me, "If you lose, don't worry. You can come back in 10 and 20 years and you'll still be young." You know, "Look at this and look at that." But I wanted to be here now because of so much that's going on. Look at the cranes. Look at the construction all around this area. So I'm glad- I'm glad to be here to witness this renaissance that I think we're living, at least in my lifetime and in my mother's lifetime, who's been here over 50 years. But we have, you know, we have to look at where there are areas that need improvement and we need to focus on that. We talk about affordable housing. You know, that's huge. You know, Tampa really is not affordable and we have a lack thereof. We talk about gender inequality. We talk about racial inequality. You know, we had the police chief here. There are improvements with the police department. He's given us the reports from- that came up in 2015 when I first got elected. I remember the comment I made. It's 2015, but it feels like 1965. Whatever, when that story came out. But things are getting better, but there are areas that we need to focus on. You brought this up and this is a great place to begin with. And as Councilmember Dingfelder said, you know, this is a new time. We got sworn in May 1st. And this is our opportunity in the next four years to build upon the areas that need to be built upon. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sitcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Carlson, thank you very, very much. Jason, thank you for the great work that you've done. And to the legislative aide that I used to have, thank him very, very, very much for me. Tampa's not the city that it was when I moved here in 1974. The great strides that we have achieved. Some of the things that I'd like, one thing I'd like to see thrown into the matrix the next time you may present this, and I hope you do present it again, is retirement. What's our retirement community as opposed to Port St. Lucie or Fort Lauderdale or St. Petersburg? In my opinion, that stabilizes their economy a little bit more. But I thank you for presenting this and I hope that we get to hear from you again. And again, this is a starting point for us. Let's look forward to what Tampa, how much better we can make Tampa. Thank you, Councilman Carlson.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gudes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Carlson, great job with the presentation, you and your staff. I wish we would have had a little bit of your matrix, talking about equality and making sure that the level of service for everyone is the same. As you know, that's not the case here. We still have a lot of challenges. It's what I call roadblocks. You've heard me say it many a times. In different areas, we have, of our communities, we have roadblocks. And that's why I'm so eager to put motions in to try to take down those barriers and those roadblocks. Especially when we talk about hiring practices, housing practices. And a lot of times, even with our own workforce here, we've got some practices that I think should be looked at. Where some people are, even young people are not getting hired by the city. There should be some type of caveat to get them into the workforce. I took a class many, many years ago when I was getting a master's degree and the professor always talked about, "You can have a job and you can make some good money at a job, but what are the benefits?" Benefits are key to a job. I could go make some money and be a welder, but where are my benefits? Where's my retirement? How does that play into a factor? And a lot of people in the city want to be city workers because their benefits come along those packages. They'll care. A lot of people are not being able to get into the workforce. So we have to look at those things as well. Housing, those roadblocks with housing. I hear it all the time. Our elderly seniors who had a discretion 30 years ago and still can't get an apartment. These simple roadblocks that we have to look at. So I'm hoping in the future, when you come back with your study, that we include some of these other types of matrix. So we can kind of get some countermeasures to stop some of these bad practices that have been lingering for years. And I can tell you as a new councilman, these are the things I'm going to be looking and fighting for to change some of those bad behaviors that we've been doing for a while. But again, I thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. And just to put in my thoughts again, a great job, Councilman, to you in your office as well as to my constituent, Dean Limian. Thank you, sir, for your work. You bring a lot, obviously, to this. You know, when I was seeing this councilman, I thought, I'm always a big history guy. And I thought about on a national level in the early 1960s when, you know, things were optimistic and there was affluence, et cetera. And then comes a book by a gentleman by the name of Michael Harrington called The Other America. It kind of reminds us that, hey, listen, things are going well and we're affluent. But there's also that other side of the United States, the other side of America that goes without. We see historically how the economy just dropped off for the middle class. From the end of World War II until about the 1970s, all sectors of the- of the American worker grew together. In fact, the top 20% made about as much of an income increase during this time as the bottom 20%. Everybody grew together, in part, not just from the post-war boom. But we had something called labor unions. About 35% of the private sector was in labor unions. We were supported by then-new programs, things like something called the minimum wage. And then to child labor in the 1930s, Social Security, expansion of Social Security disability. 1960s, we saw things like Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera, et cetera, that helped the middle class and helped people who were desperately trying to get into the middle class. Then in 1970s, due to a number of issues, the economy, the bottom of the economy fell out for so many American workers. We obviously experienced that here. We see that here in Tampa. You look at different areas like Sulfur Springs, parts of East Tampa, parts of Terrace Park, often Nebraska, et cetera, where childhood poverty is about double what we have throughout the city of Tampa, over that 50, 60, 65%. You know, the issue is, what are we going to do about it? We- I know the administration is putting forth a number of good ideas. Council's putting forth a number of good ideas. Something that I'd like to see, that I've been talking with staff about and seeing if we can push this forward, is what I like to call the pathway to the middle class for a lot of lower-income folks, which is encouraging apprenticeships through various, whatever measures that we can here in the city of Tampa. Seeing if we can take that 18, 19-year-old leaving high school with maybe not the best feature in their own eyes and then putting them on a path that would ultimately have them earning 40, 50, 60,000 jobs, dollars in a job through a skilled trade. I want to see what we can do to encourage apprenticeships here in the city of Tampa. That's something that other cities have put their mark on and I am taking a look at that issue. This also requires us to also work with other local governments and something that we all agree on. We all agree, for example, that education is the pathway to the middle class. We got to work with our friends in the school board and making sure that we can do whatever we can in our individual positions to improve education, et cetera. So I think that this is a good thing. And again, I just, I thank you for your hard work in this. You're obviously very passionate about this and we're glad to have you here with us. Thank you, sir.
Can I just do a quick wrap-up or?
Of course.
Just to thank USF and Jason, Alex. USF did this pro bono and they have lots of data analytics. They've helped the Tampa Bay Partnership to crunch numbers and slice and dice the numbers in all different kinds of ways. What we tried to do is keep this basic thing simple, but we or they can go through and slice it up any way we want. Two quick analogies to end with. You all, many people know I'm a Star Wars fan. Disney just opened up Galaxy's Edge. And they're getting lots of hype, lots of publicity about opening this new Star Wars area. They've got a new Star Wars movie coming up. Ultimately, in a year from now or two years from now, the shareholders are going to look back and say, "How did that change the number of people who went to Disney? How did it change our revenues? How did it change our profits? How did it change our hotel stays?" And so the same thing here. The capital markets are really an info- place where you can get information. In the public sector, in the government sector, it's hard to figure out what measures you should use. There are measures that make us look really good, measures that make us look really bad. If we have an objective set of measures, it will help guide us in the future. Last analogy, 10 years ago, the mission statement for the Tampa Airport was, I'm going to paraphrase slightly, but it was, "To provide efficient, cost-effective service for airlines." And many of you know, a group of us worked to try to change that. We brought in new management at the airport as activists. And we created a new mission statement, which is to make Tampa Airport an economic engine for the region. So instead of measuring the cost per passenger fee, which they were doing before, instead they looked at the impact on the community. And part of that was to measure the number of international flights and the number of domestic flights that came in. And they've helped transform our region. And the point is that if you get good management in, which I think we have here now, and if we measure the right things, we can get big results. We just need to watch the numbers. So thank you all for indulging me.
Thank you, sir. And if we try hard and don't succeed, then the voters will tell us that you have failed me for the last time.
That's right.
That's the Star Wars line, so.
Thank you. Tricky is.
Tricky is. I know that one. Yes, sir. Okay, next we move to, let's see here, to public comment. And before we go, Sal, how are you doing time-wise? I mean, do you want to? You sure? Okay, just making sure. Okay. Public comment, we appear to have a, is, who's here for public comment? If y'all could raise your hand. Okay. Go ahead, sir. Please state your name.
Councilmembers, Paul Curtis. You probably recall from my letter dated August 20th from Nielsen Surety Company, my bonding company, who has offered a $20 million surety bond line for public construction in support of the most underutilized group of WMBE firms, which happens to be African-Americans. I need to state, because I represent several groups, I'm also a member of the Transportation Research Board, a Washington DC-based think tank who provides research support to the US Department of Transportation. We operate in oversight, if you will, of every US DOT grantee who has a DBE or MBE program, including the city of Tampa. So I'm also the president of the Suncoast Minority Contractor Alliance, a statewide group of one dozen African-American construction contractors that espouses political advocacy, governmental relations and training. And of course, from time to time, but not today, I represent the American Legion Veteran Small Business Task Force in Washington DC. So as far as the WMBE program is concerned, well, you all have a report. The African-American segment of the WMBE population is pretty much in despair. I think that the mayor is due kudos for including a disparity study in her budget, which is now approved. And I would salute this council. If you move swiftly to attempt to engage a disparity consultant, you could impress me if you advertised from somebody before Christmas. And a couple of things, not to take too long, is that I think that African-American group in Tampa is so disenfranchised, it will require extreme outreach. I don't mean like the outreach events that you have with all the small businesses. I mean specific to the African-American group. And that can draw people out, including utilizing the Pipes program to advent methods such as the HUD Section 3 involving the citizens. Several comments have been made just this morning about increasing the middle class. If the city is going to spend $3 billion and there's $300 million worth of work advertised today on the street as we speak, somehow these dollars should be captured and, you know, somehow applied to the citizens in the community. If it works on HUD, if it works on housing, it'll work on this. It's something the city has the authority to do. And I think that improving the analytics, collecting the data of success or failure is very important because we don't know where we're going. It's been, I don't know, 16 years since there was a disparity study? That's a lot of years. Who's here? Who went out of business before the recession and didn't come back? My office over in Oak Park, 20 years ago, we had 10 African-American contractors within one mile of my office. Plenty of them are dead or gone now, but we have to replenish. People went out of business with the recession. Well, that happened everywhere, including here. We got to bring them back. It might take extreme-type outreach, training. Some of the grants that are going to nonprofits could go to African-American contractor trade groups for licensing. We don't have enough licensees. So I'm not going to stay here all day. I appreciate the heads up to come in and talk about the topic. And I'll be, you know, pl-... and I'll be, you know, pleased to provide any information that anybody would like. You know, I'm on the record, contact me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Next, please.
Good morning, Connie Burton. There was an African artist group that taught, recorded a song, and it was called "Smiling Faces Sometime Pretend." And sometime throughout those faces, we can't see the evil that lurks within. I think, I appreciate your metrics report this morning, because we got to have a starting point. Some people have been around in this city council, and when came back, glad to see you. But if you look around, some of the conditions still remain the same. And we got to get serious about it. So as a homework assignment for me, I'm going to be going to that website, and I'm going to be sending out suggestions and from the community, so we can help push this ball along. And what was so kind of wrenching for me to look at is when we look at the crime statistics and how low Tampa was, and then I look inside of the community and see all of the social services that are needed. You know why? Because so many people are incarcerated. We back the square one. People are incarcerated, so now grandmothers and mothers and aunties got to raise these children. And the place of reunion for a lot of African people, unfortunately, is at the courthouse, because we see people coming and going every day. We talk about the wealth gap. We talk about housing. We talk about watching inside of East Tampa homes being built at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and people feel comfortable with that. Is the new trend? It is not working for us. And so we're going to just keep on repeating the same thing until somebody up there get it. When we see monies moving around to impress and divide our community, we are not happy with that. We want a serious discussion around homeownership that will encompass upon people with inside the working poor. We don't even say affordable housing no more, because that they may hijack. So people that's working at the Walmarts and the Checkers and the McDonald's, they need to have a decent place to stay outside of these hotels in which they are finding themselves having to call home. We need that discussion. And again, as we tell the mayor and the transition team, and to you all that was elected just recently, the clock is ticking. I'm hoping that the voters are smarter than we were four years ago, and we don't continue this cycle of letting people make their promises to us without delivery. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Elton Lassiter. I am the political organizer on behalf of Organized Florida. I'm speaking on behalf of a couple of my members who are unable to come this morning. They have a situation, a living situation, being ex-felons. They're having very much difficulty finding housing. And what they wanted to convey to you today is that they need some help. They've committed these crimes over ten years ago. And as people, when we're trying to reintegrate into society, things, we need some, they need some assistance. It's very difficult when you've completed your sentence, you're back out in society, but you can't find a place to live. You can't find a safe place to live. It's difficult enough as well to find jobs. So ultimately, they have been given a life sentence when the judge only gave them a certain amount of time. So what I wanted to convey to you today is that we need programs that help these people. They need assistance. I myself am a ex-felon, and it was very difficult for me to find housing. I thank God that I had a support system through family and friends, where I was able to seek some help in those arenas. And I found a job with an organization who didn't look at my background. They looked at me today and saw that I could do the job, right? So I'm thankful for that. But I'm saying, there's a lot of people that don't have that type of assistance. They don't have family to help them. They don't have friends. They don't have a support system for when they're trying to reintegrate themselves into society. These two women I'm speaking of on behalf of Organized Florida committed crimes ten years ago. They shouldn't still be dealing with this type of situation. So I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention. You guys are our city council, and I would like for you guys to try to put some programs into place that can assist people like that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And sir, if, if you want, I mean, I'm sure you can get in touch with my aide or somebody's aide, and we can try to see if these two women, we can help them find some housing if you want to. Brandon, if you're watching this, get in touch with Elton if you don't mind. Thank you, sir. She'll come to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, my friend. And before, ma'am, before you go, is there anybody else here who's here for speaking? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Allison Gate, and I've only been in Tampa a short time and traveling a lot. But I am very concerned, I'm very amazed at how much of a renaissance there is happening. And I'm concerned about the environment and that there was no discussion of that, and that Tampa right now still has a lot of green spaces, but they're disappearing. So I believe that should be an important point mentioned whenever we talk about trying to preserve this area and what's good about it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Okay. Next, we move to committee reports. Councilman Miranda, items five and six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, move item five and six with two appointments from the mayor to the sports authority board.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by my Councilman Ascalco, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, next we move to staff reports and unfinished business, seven. And let's go ahead and take seven, ten. Go ahead, number seven.
Thank you, Council Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I am here on item seven. Okay, so item seven was a request to appear and discuss potential code changes to Tampa Code Chapter Fifteen related to non-motive vehicles and enforcement aspects related to any particular code changes. By non-motive vehicles, it is my understanding that in particular that there has been a concern about boat trailer and other pleasure craft trailers parking on residential streets. So I want to talk to you first about what we currently have in place. You have a definition of...
Before Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just say, this is, maybe you all have had complaints about this too, but I've had a lot of complaints about boats and RVs being parked in the regular street blocking thing. So that's the kind of genesis.
So I want to start with what you currently have in your books. That's a starting place, which is you have a definition of non-motive vehicles, which is basically any vehicle that's not motorized. Any vehicle is basically anything that's transporting a person or property upon public streets. You currently have a regulation that non-motive vehicles are prohibited from parking in parking meter zones. So let me start with saying, we do not believe that you are preempted from regulating in this area. So you would, any regulations that you have or that you want to amend would be under your home rule authority. So as long as you have a rational basis to do it, and it supports the public health, safety, and welfare, you can regulate in this area. There are a couple ways in looking at what other jurisdictions do in regarding this area. Some prohibit boat trailer or pleasure craft trailers completely on residential streets or in all areas of the city from parking on the streets. But what you see more commonly is that there is a prohibition for overnight parking. So that allows for people to bring their boats to the residences, load and unload during the day, but prohibits them from being there overnight. Both of those would be within the realm of possibility of what you could look at doing. You asked us also to speak a little bit about the enforcement of it. And I, currently, TPD enforces in this, in areas of the city that aren't related to the parking garages and metered spaces. That's how this particular regulation, if you choose to go forward, would be enforced. Would be something, need to be looked at a little bit further. Currently, under your code, this type of regulation would be subject to a parking citation, which is a twenty-nine-dollar citation. If you don't pay it, there's a process to challenge it. We can go into more details of that if you're interested. It also does, under your code, currently allow for impoundment of these vehicles or immobilization. I do want to put forward that that is not an easy process. If you're trying to tow a boat, it would not be most likely, from a practical standpoint, the first line of attack for any violations. It would be something that would be more of a last resort, because it is difficult and costly. And as I have been told, although I'm not an expert on towing boats, I had been told that there can be a lot of problems when you do it. The boats can fall over, we could potentially have liability. So I wouldn't want anyone to think that if you did pass a regulation, all those boats would be immediately impounded. That's more of a practical consideration. But it is an option on the table, and I would recommend that you keep it as such an option. Parking department is here if you have any further questions for them. But I think this is mostly a policy determination for city council to make. And there's probably both sides to that argument. But if you would like us to go forth and draft something, we can bring it back and have additional public comment on it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Citro, you have a question?
Just a quick question. Great to see you again. Thank you for, for being here. Would a boot be more appropriate as opposed to towing?
It is an option. Under your code currently, the immobilization is typically some sort of boot. And whether or not that's going to work better on a boat, it certainly is most likely easier, because you can get to the wheels. But, you know, it's going to be more of a practical consideration that we could look more into and have more information on that when we come back.
Thank you.
Councilman Miranda?
Just for a point of clarity, sometime back in history, boats were not allowed to be parked on your property. Then we changed the law, not the law, the aspect of it, that you could park it as long as it was behind the front of your house. Not in front of the house, but beside of your side alley, where it wasn't visible directly from the eye. You had to look for it, because it was parallel to the side of your house. Now, and it's not court enforcement. It's court enforcement has so many things to do, which one of them is boats. And I remember one in Davis Island particularly, across from the fire station. That was a pain for everyone. And it, it, but not only that one. There's thousands of boats now that are in the driveway in front of the house. Is that legal or not?
Ms. Miranda, that is...
I just want clarity. And I'm not asking you to answer me now. I'm just bringing it up in a conversation.
I can, I can answer generally now. That's a different set of regulations. And in general, you are prohibited from parking in front of your house, so that it's most likely, there are some exceptions if there's no other availability for parking. But as a general rule, you are not allowed to park in front of the house.
And I agree with Mr. Citro, Councilman Citro. However, most boats that are parked are moved for six months, because it, that's the way it is. You buy a boat, and you love it when you buy it, and you love it more when you sell it. That's what I hear, that's what I hear on the street. In fact, I owned a boat once, I never got in it. It was stolen. But it is what it is. And there's so many other things that court enforcement, and you don't have, I look at something with a wider spectrum, wider lenses. When, when we go back and talk about court enforcement for the last thirty years, it was to help and do a good job, and they try. It was to talk to the neighborhood association, they've certainly done that. It was peer-to-peer, they've certainly done that. It was daily reports, they've certainly done that. It was follow-ups, they've certainly done that. But the problem keeps multiplying. And the reason it multiplies is the economic situation in only certain areas of the city. The preponderance of things happen in early certain neighborhoods, not because they want to, because that's the way it is. And, and I look at court enforcement, and the way it was then, some mayors in the past, I'm not going to say who, said, "I want everybody to be the eyes. I want everybody who drives a vehicle to report something that they see to court enforcement." You wouldn't have twenty-four officers, you would have five hundred officers, really, that are not court enforcement officers, doing the sightseeing and riding court-in-court enforcement. However, I look at things differently. I really believe that every police officer, before they're sworn in, has got to spend one month with a court enforcement officer riding around, so that they understand what the court enforcement officers have to do. It's a very difficult job. I see them all the time. There's a young lady I saw the other day driving on Tampa Bay Boulevard. Car was parked with the lights on flashing like it should be, and I didn't see her. Then in my rear mirror, I saw her about a block away walking to the car. And the reason she parked there, because that whole block, just about, I say just about, had cars parked on the sidewalk. And it got to the point where you have more cars than people on that house, because they're rental properties. And I'm not going to harp that again, but we all know it's happening. It only happens in certain neighborhoods. In some others, very minute, so you don't see them as readily. But when you see that, they're not paying ad valorem taxes like they should. The landings aren't for it like it is. The federal government's not collecting their taxes on income, because they don't report it. And it's, it's a shame that for years we haven't done anything. But on the other flip side of the coin, I say the other side. I say we solve that problem. And what do we do to the people that live in those houses? Where do they live at? We're caught in a vice. We're trying to help people to have better housing, yet we have this situation, and we take them out. Where do they live? Where do they go? It's not an easy, easy fix. So we're going to take a convention of people, not, not four or five, to try to solve this problem. And it won't be solved for years to come, way past my term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I would like to get a recommendation on specific language for an ordinance for the overnight. The overnight parking seems to be a reasonable solution. Can we take motions on workshop or not?
Let's do it at the end.
At the end, okay. So anyway, I'll come back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just got a message before we move on, that Tony Mulkey is here for a walk-on for rescheduling the breast cancer walk that was...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on, in regard to the boat issue, and Mr. Carlson, I wanted to say, I'm concerned about fixing things that ain't broke. And Charlie, you've been around, you've been around the longest of anybody, but I haven't received a whole lot of...
Been around with all the boats with wooden.
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't received a lot of complaints about, you know, parking, parking the boats in the street, and that's, or RVs in the street or whatever. You know, maybe, maybe it could be a time limit or something, like no more than a week. There's something so people don't use it as permanent storage. Mr. Carlson, I was just saying, I'm a little concerned about fixing something that, that ain't broke, so they say. Because we could be kicking up a real, a real big hornet's nest. Maybe there's a department out there that could give us a little more information of, I was thinking code enforcement has a lot of eyes. TPD and code enforcement have probably the most eyes and ears on the street. And maybe we could get some additional information from them in terms of how, how big a problem and issue this is. I mean, I don't doubt that you've received a, some complaints. I don't know how to quantify that, but anyway, that's, that's my only concern.
I don't remember the number, but I have had a bunch of calls about it. The rumor is that this district gets more calls on things than anybody.
No rumor at all.
Calls on all kinds of things.
Definitely true.
You would know. You did? I don't think I have.
I received one, one complaint in a coffee shop about a boat in Hyde Park. And didn't have to do anything, because a week later, the guy moved the boat, so. And the boat's been gone since.
Is it, is it possible with geographic, sorry, is it possible with geographic limitations too? If only South Tampa cares about it, or Davis Island.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. The short answer to that is no, because you don't regulate just because somebody cares about it. You have to have a public safety or a public welfare issue related to it. So if there was something unique to hide, park, and say the streets were more narrow, you could say you can't do it on streets of a certain width or something like that, but you can't just do it by geographical area. It has to have a basis that would apply logically to wherever those, those criteria would be met.
Later on, I'll make, later on, I'll make a motion, and then we can debate it. And then, and then if we decide to come back with a proposed ordinance, then we can debate a lot then too, and hear more from the public.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Citro?
Just very quickly, my years as magistrate on code enforcement, there was a certain term, brought into compliance. And once these boats that are known as a problem, they move them, go out fishing, code enforcement officer comes out, the property's been brought back into compliance. Or then that boat goes and parks again at the end of the day. In my opinion, Councilman Carlson, you have a great idea with looking into overnight regulation parking there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Come on in.
Morning, Council. Tony Mulkey, Special Events Superintendent. Walking on an item today, that's a rescheduled event for a special event street closure. It's for the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk. That's, was scheduled for last Saturday, but has been delayed till November third due to inclement weather this past weekend.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dinkfelder, a second, I believe, by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Chairman, may I speak on this one second only? I appreciate what you've done, and I know this is only for half... I appreciate what you've done, and I know this is only for half a day or something like that, and it's for well cause. However, when you look at your computer on closures of streets, you're going to find over four thousand streets are closing the city of Tampa on any given year, for reasons, for water breaks, for whatever cause, but it's for the purpose and well-being of the citizens. However, we must look at things a little differently. There's one street in West Tampa that's going to be closed for nine months. And I ain't going to say where, because I'm not going to say that I'm after somebody because I'm not. But my whole neighborhood used to walk around that block, now they can't do it. And it was never approved by any official of the city of Tampa, other than some department decided, and those higher officers than I and those in bigger departments than we are have known about it now. And what I'm saying is, if this doesn't change, then we're going to have to write an ordinance that if you close a street for anything other than city purposes for more than a week, then it must be approved through the government, from the mayor's office to this council, because I'm not going to stand still and see a city block closed for nine months or so when they have their own property and they can build whatever the world they're building at their property, which is just behind their real property today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And Councilman Carlson, is your, the number nine here yet? Okay, and we'll just take her whenever, then whenever they come. Okay, next we move to number ten.
This one again, a lot of complaints, issues, I can weigh in after Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rebecca Kurt. I'm here on item ten, that I just completely lost my paper on. But item ten was a request to appear and talk about some potential code changes regarding the uses of gas leaf blowers, the dumping of lawn debris in stormwater drains and culverts, and the consequences that result from this dumping of debris. So in speaking with the maker of the motion, Councilman Carlson's office, I heard, it was my understanding that there were a couple of issues with the leaf blowers. One is the noise, one is the debris getting blown into the stormwater, and another one is gas emissions. So I kind of wanted to talk about them separately because they go under separate regulations. The first one I want to talk about is the noise. Hopefully this one won't fall. I can't get it. Full disclosure, this was taken from a PowerPoint that was created by the city of Naples about a year ago, but I thought it had some pretty interesting information in it, just for preliminary points of discussion, where it talks about noise regulations. So at the top, you have a jet plane over at a thousand feet in a rock band, a gas lawnmower at three feet is a hundred, and lawn leaf blowers, both electric and gas, are somewhere between the sixty-five and the eighty-five. Heavy traffic is about sixty-something, just by way of comparison. I think from a practical standpoint, if you've ever been near a leaf blower, they're very loud. I mean, there's, there's no question about that kind of thing. And the various leaf blowers have different decibel levels. There are some that are on the market now that have silencers, they're a lot more expensive, but there are some options out there. So as you may or may not be aware, the city of Tampa has its own noise regulations, and we expressly exempt out sound which results from the reasonable maintenance of property located in the city of Tampa, including but not limited to lawnmowers, chippers, clippers, blowers, tools, power tools, and tractors. So you have no noise regulations on any of these things under your current city code. Anytime you change your noise regulations, you're typically going to have me explain that you have to have a predicate, even if the noise itself, such as a lawn chipper, doesn't implicate free speech, the noise regulations as a whole do, and they can have an implication on that. However, I think it's pretty clear that you could establish a predicate that these are all very loud, and you could look at some potential regulations. One of them would be to ban them. Another one, which is what you see more commonly, as opposed to exempting them out, is to limit the hours of operation. You currently have hours of, it's not hours of operation, but you certainly have hour limitations on construction noise, and you could do something similar, and you've already established that, you know, those are reasonable sorts of regulations. So that's one thing that city council could consider, is some limitation on the hours. The other question that was brought up was the blowing of the leaves into the drainage system and the problems. City of council has already determined that that is a problem and through public hearings established what a great problem it was, and you have a regulation on it. So it is already unlawful for any individual to introduce any foreign matter, including the leaves and the grass clippings, into the public drainage system. And you also have it so that any business is also held liable on that. So when this was written, there were some questions about enforcement, you know, code enforcement going up to individuals. Typically, code enforcement goes up to homes and you cite the property owner, but that's not what this sort of situation is. It's not necessarily that you're going to cite the homeowner, you're going to cite the individual that's doing that. So because of that, this was expressly written so that the individual can be cited and have a seventy-five dollar, I believe it is, fine. And a business that cited is a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. And if there's an individual who's working for a business, under this code, a written notice, if you find that the individual's violating it, a written notice is sent to the business, the lawn company. And after that, if you see that individual doing it again, the business can be held jointly and severely liable, so then you can cite the business because they now have known, they now know that this is a problem and that somebody in their, their employee was violating it, and so we feel that we can hold them liable for not enforcing that. But that's currently what you have on your books, so it has been recognized it's a problem. It was addressed by a code a few years ago. It was updated most recently in twenty-seventeen, twenty-fifteen, I apologize, and that's, that's the enforcement that was done on it. I do want to say that we did look, and we also believe that this is not an area that you are preempted, so you can regulate this under your home rule authority. And in looking across the country, there are different ways that people have regulated these. We've already talked about a time limitation. There are some cities that have banned the gas blowers, both for the noise and for the emissions. There are other things that cause emissions, as you all know, you know, gas lawnmowers and as well as other lawn equipment also cause emissions. The only city in the city of Florida that has had a complete ban on gas blowers is the city of Palm Beach, which is not very comparable to the city of Tampa because as the last census, it has a population under ten thousand, and I believe it's in the top thirty wealthiest countries, I mean, cities in America. So it's not necessarily a comparable regulation. I say that because in my examination, I just want to let you know, although legally, I think you can regulate in this area, you probably are going to want to take some time, take some public input if you do choose to go forward with some sort of ban, because they've been very controversial. There's an expense added to people, and it obviously, replacing this sort of equipment is more expensive or more proportionally expensive for people of lower incomes. So these have tended to be very controversial, and I just wanted to let you know that as you're going forward, that you're probably going to want to take some time to get some public comment on this one. We do have Mr. Rogario here to talk about enforcement of the current regulation as it has existed and provide you some background on that.
Sal Rogario. I don't have much to report because we don't get many calls on this type of violation. Over the last year, we've probably had four incidences where we either observed somebody, and we have to observe to actually make the case, where we observed a violation occurring. Two were, three were grass being blown into the drain, and there was citation issued for that. And the fourth one was a code officer was checking out a plaza and observed a restaurant employee pouring oil into the drain, and he cited him for that. So we're real limited on the stats that we have on this, and we don't get a lot of calls from the public. So if you have any questions, I, you know, I'll take them.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson, then Councilman Miranda, then I believe Councilman Dinkfelder, then Councilman Mancakko, then Councilman Citro.
Just to start, the other issue that wasn't brought up is the, is the pollution issue. So gas blowers, there's a whole bunch of evidence on how much they pollute the air besides the noise part of it. I would be open to some restrictions on the times you can use them. Ideally, what I'd like to do is figure out if we could switch to, maybe over a year or two, ask people to phase out to electric blowers. I have some people I know who are in the lawn maintenance business, and they said it's not the cost of the blowers, it's, it's the recharging them that they'd have to figure out because they would, the gas ones are just easier to put gas in and keep them going throughout the day. But the bigger issue is that, you'll remember when the, I wasn't here yet, but when the stormwater tax was approved, they spent a whole bunch of time going through digging all this stuff out of the gutters. And I think we need, at the very least, we need to update this, this rule about dumping into the stormwater gutters, because what's happening is that I don't see people taking a bag of leaves and dumping it into the gutter, which would be obvious. What they're doing instead is they're, they're blowing everything out on the street, and it's not fair to the neighboring homeowners, it's not a fair to people. I think it's a traffic hazard because you're driving by and they're blowing rocks and leaves and everything in people's faces as they're driving. And the idea would be just to tell people, you have to, you can blow it if you want, but keep it on your own property, don't blow it off into the street, because when it gets to the street, then it's going into the storm drain, and that's where it's causing the city flooding problems. The biggest problem I get, complaint I get besides maybe scooters is flooding, and the last thing we need is more and more of this being dumped into the streets, which then goes into the gutter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rogario, very much. This is the first time I've heard that anyone got fined for, I think this is a violation of chapter twenty-seven, if I recall. That's what my aide told me some years or so ago. But that's been in the books of, you know, putting things into the sewer for many years. However, I compare it to when we had a water crisis. What that department did, they had a contract for water police. We hired people to drive around and catch people who had the sprinklers on. Not that we did it with intent, we did it because there was no water. And like that, just like the case like there was no water, this is a case of, we've got to clean up somebody's mess that we're paying for, not them. That's the problem that we have. And if anybody goes into the tertiary treatment plant, you'd be surprised what they find in there. It's amazing. So what I'm saying is, in order to solve these problems, you just can't get on complaint basis, you must have feet or drivers in the street looking for them. I myself can show you five every day that's happening, because they do it on a daily basis. One time, I'm almost driving down Henderson Boulevard and Swan, and I saw a truck I did not know attach to one of our piles that we have there where you open up the valve for fire and all that, the fire hydrant. And it was about seven-thirty in the morning, I'm watching this guy just take water, filling up his tank. So I called the chief that handled that department, and he said, "Well, you got to find out because some have that right because there's contractors that were paying to do watering of the palms and trees, whatever they got." In this case, it was not. Just about a month ago, right in the corner of my house, I'm coming out of my house, and I see a truck dumping something into the sewer line. I took pictures of it. I gave it to that same department head, and that was taken care of immediately. So it's, you got to have feet on the ground. Complaints by phone are not going to solve the problem. You must have, if you really want to do something, you got to have somebody call. Either the police department can call, somebody's got to call, but the police department is burdened on crime, but this is a crime too, because it's taking the public necessity out of somebody who's not dumping and forcing the tertiary treatment plant to solve a problem that's not theirs. It's created by whoever that subcontractor, contractor, homeowner is. And that's what's going on all over the city. Not in West Tampa, not in East Tampa, all over, in South Tampa, everywhere, in New Tampa, everywhere it's going on today as we speak. The problem will not be solved unless you have boots on the ground. Thank you. Just like you have water meters, if we didn't have water meter readers, you'd never get a water bill. And that's what's going on. We don't hear about it, and I'm not, I'm with you, and I understand what you're saying, but we have to change the way we do business, and now you'll never solve this problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilman Dinkfelder?
There's a lot of good issues that Ms. Kurt brought up, and Sal, thanks for your report. My first question, which you already answered, was is there much enforcement activity going on or complaints and that sort of thing? It sounds to me like, what, in the last couple of years, just a handful. I just wanted to speak in our own household. I was a little skeptical. My wife, I guess she bought it present for me, some lawn equipment. I'm not sure how, you know, how that works out as a present, but, but anyway, but, but the three pieces were battery operated. It was a lawnmower, edger, and a blower, and they all shared the battery. It was, you know, I thought, well, it's kind of neat, you know? And so that was about six months ago, and it's worked out pretty good. I mean, I was actually able to go out and mow the yard yesterday or the day before, like at seven-thirty in the morning, which I would never do with a gas mower because they're so loud, but with the electric mower, it was actually so quiet, you know, you really can't hear. So that was pretty neat. But I just wanted to share that I do have some concerns about, you know, us taking a big step forward and mandating, you know, mandating electric equipment in terms of, you know, this sort of thing, just because, not only from the commercial side, but a lot of people, you know, a lot of people have, I mean, maybe we could create some sort of incentives or something a little, a little, a little more tame than, than actually mandating or eliminating gas, gas equipment. I don't know. It concerns me a little bit from the financial side of things.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Mancakko?
So in looking at the EPA and the Clean Water Act, I saw that some studies suggest that eighty percent of trash that goes into our system and waterways is from land. I don't know if that's just leaf blowers or people just throwing an empty bottle out the window and it ends up in our, in our system, but I know we're talking about leaf blowers, but I remember with the, and Councilman Carlson briefly mentioned it, with the stormwater capital improvement assessment that we did in 2016 and the maintenance assessment that came along with it, and a news story or the city said of what they were finding in these pipes and drainage systems that hadn't been cleaned since the seventies, license plates, Coca-Cola bottles that were from that era, all sorts of stuff. I don't know if it was Councilwoman Koppine that mentioned it up on the dais, but I know there's, you know, methods of, you know, leaf blowers are blowing things into our, into our storm drains, for example, when people are throwing trash. But different methods, like just a grill, a mesh grill, or something that's removable and put into the drain that keeps a lot of this junk, anything from leaves to trash in general, out of our system. I don't know if other cities do it. I know throughout Europe, I've seen some, but has the city considered looking into putting some kind of grate or mesh or something in front of these storm drains that would prevent some of this trash from getting in there and other things? Do you know?
I couldn't answer that because I don't, I don't oversee stormwater.
Brad was here a minute ago.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't give you an answer on that because I don't oversee that.
I mean, it seems like a, like a simple fix because of all the junk that got into our, our system, you know, over decades, and we saw that when we didn't clean it for decades, you know, until we had that assessment a couple of years ago. But that should be an easy enough way where, you know, the grill is detachable, so if they have to pull out weeds and other things that grow through there, that's it. I mean, I think that would, we're not talking about the noise of the, of the leaf blower, but at least what is being blown into the, and knocked into the system should be a cheap enough, I mean, I wouldn't say go to Home Depot and buy the mesh and put it there, but it's, I mean, it's, it's as simple as that. So anyways, I think we should, we should look at that. I don't know, you know, the EPA website offers different solutions from New York to Los Angeles of what they do. They don't mandate anything, but I mean, it seems like a common sense approach to at least keep the debris out of the system. We're not talking about the noise of the leaf blower, but it's easier on the maintenance of what we have, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Good.
Well, you know, in a lot of areas, a lot of communities, you know, gas is a big thing, and we talk about jobs, and it would be hard pressed just talking about putting a mandate for electric, because where are you going to get the electric from? If you're a contractor or a small business owner, where's the electric going to come from? How are you going to pump in to cut the grass and mow it? Now, I, I do get frustrated, I see the blowers that sometimes hit my, hit my car too, but for to put a ban on, on gas and go to electric, I think that's going to hurt a lot of small businesses and a lot of people in general. So I couldn't really support that, but I can look at maybe doing something as far as the blowers or get some mesh sort of drains, that's the issue, but the, as far as just going straight electric, that's going to be hard pressed for me.
I can address, we looked at, at some electrical attachments for our cleanup operations, and it does, it does get a little, it does get expensive. Still makes a power pack where they have different attachments, like a blower, a line trimmer, and... trimmer, and, and so the initial cost of that equipment is like fifteen hundred dollars to set it up. You know, this is commercial stuff I'm talking about. So you take, I'll give you a snapshot of neighborhood enhancement. We would need thirty-two of those. And the initial cost would probably be just right around forty-eight thousand dollars. And then the life, depending on use, the battery packs can't, you know, they, they can be recharged, but then they lose it within two years. So you have a, a, a recurring cost of twenty-five thousand dollars every couple of years. But when you look at practicality for what my enhancement people do, they deal with a lot of overgrown lots, overgrown alleys, and the manufacturer of this, M&amp;M is a local distributor of this, this product. They advised us that they would not recommend for the job that we do to go, to go to electric, go to, go to these power packs, because they're not geared up for that. They, they're geared up for properties that are well manicured, they don't require a lot of maintenance, and to put them in an operation that, where we go in and clean out an alley or overgrown lot, they just wouldn't be practical and they wouldn't last. So that just gives you some insight on that.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
It sounds like maybe there's not consensus to switch to mandate switching to electric. I don't know how you all feel about hours of operation, but the big issue to me here is, is dumping all this waste in the street. And Councilman Miranda, you know, brought up some other points about how much, how much the city has to treat and take the, spend to take this out. When we get to the motion section, I'll propose a motion and see if you all accept it or not, but about, about maybe limiting people from not dumping it into the street or in other people's yards maybe also. But it just seems unfair that you can just dump whatever you want in the street. It's not fair to everybody else.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
I think, I think the hours is definitely, if we don't, if we don't include hours, we should, we, we limit hours, Rebecca, I believe, for construction. Can't remember exactly how the code reads, but it, but it seems to be the same concept. And it's kind of funny, because sometimes on a Saturday morning, I want to jump out of bed and, and start real early. My wife says, no, that's too early for that leaf blower. So, you know, so maybe common sense like she has should prevail, but, but, you know, occasionally people don't think about that, or maybe they get up earlier than other people and they have to be reminded. But, but I think out, Rebecca, you have something on, on hours?
I, I just wanted to say that you do have hours on construction activity, which is seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM to six PM on Saturday, and ten AM to six PM on Sunday. And the current, and also your current regulation twenty-one dash nine, protection of public drainage systems, which we are already talking about, already does prohibit it from the streets. That it's included expressly in the public drainage system. Excuse me, I apologize. It says the public drainage system includes, but is not limited to streets. So it is included in that. It's, it's very possible that people don't realize that yet, but it is already in the language.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move to our workshops, item number eleven. Oh, actually, what was that? No, well, that, that was a staff report, so there is no public comment. Yes, now we move to our workshops, item number eleven.
Good morning, counsel. Catherine Coyle, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number eleven, I'll go briefly through the, the items. Number one, request receiver report on overall effectiveness. This is related to the new tree code that went into effect June first, 2019. The, this is related to requesting for the workshop for the first six months since the code was effective. We're actually only at about four and a half months right now. The, the programming changes, just to give you a quick update, the programming changes in our Excel permitting system have been made. The five new trust fund, tree trust fund accounts were created, so the dollars are being collected as of June first and being placed in the, the five separate accounts as opposed to the one original city account. The tree removal zone reviews for tree removal zone eligible lots are, that has been added into the building permit record process, and so that data, those reviews are being done, the data is being captured. There are still two pending programming-related items for our Excel permitting system that are in the queue right now with our program and contractor. Configuration and launch of the tree mitigation planting permit, that's being configured to, to release, that's the one that actually you pull the permit to plant off-site on someone else's property or within the planning district. And then the configuration and launch of the, the reporting for the TRZ data that's collected. Let's see, for variance review board counts, as of the effective date of the new ordinance that hit August 2019, September and October hearings for VRB. All the applications that were processed through the variance review board that I'm going to mention were for grand tree removal. In the August hearing, there was one denied and one approved. Neither were appealed to city council. September 2019, there were no variance applications submitted to remove grand trees. And then in October, there were two approved to remove grand trees, and we are now past the appeal period timeframe, so that's why I was able to mention them. Another piece of information, we are getting ready to launch our first city certified arborist training classes to certify, to add a certification for certified arborists that are already out there, private arborists, to perform a certain list of duties that we would normally perform. They're going to take essentially two half-day classes in mid-November. We already have a, a first round of people on our list that have indicated they're wanting to take the classes. And they'll be able to perform many of the duties in the, in the code. And then we're going to institute an auditing process program as opposed to having to perform all the work ourselves. So that's a good addition to use, utilizing the private industry to help us with those. Item number two, addressing the four-inch limb pruning. This did relate to specimen trees. Specimen trees are grand tree species, but they measure twenty-four inches and up. This was a new add to this code. It did not exist in the previous code. The question was whether or not we could have some type of affidavit process put in. The code actually was adopted with, it included specifically in twenty-seven, two-eighty-four, two dot three, that the applicant can file an affidavit guaranteeing that all pruning works shall be in accordance with the NC standards. Those are the accepted arboricultural, arboriculture industry standards. The arborists that go through the training will be able to do that. To date, we've only had two pruning permits that have come through for specimen trees. Let's see, and item number three, discussion on hardship criteria, and legal department is here to address that one. And I'm available for any questions.
Several questions.
Several questions, Mr. Chairman. Several questions. What I want to know about is the tree trust fund. When I go through certain communities that call for assistance from the city, it's always, we don't have any type of service to assist. So I want to know what services do we have that assist some of our elderly seniors who call my office all the time that the trees are coming on their house and they can't afford to have their trees cut? But I know we have a tree trust fund that money goes in when we do zoning ordinances that they pay into a fund. So I like to know how that money is, is divvied up, how is it dispersed? So I, I, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, that, that's related to item number three, and that's where we were going to defer to the legal department for that.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I am not prepared today to give a full discussion on the distribution of the tree mitigation fund, but I did understand that the question that was previously brought forward was, can the tree trust fund money go to help people who are in need of help with the tree services? And unfortunately, because I know cutting down trees can be prohibitively expensive, the tree trust fund money can't be used for those purposes because-
Why is that, Ms. Kurt?
Because when we collect the fee, we're collecting it to mitigate for the removal of trees. So it can only be utilized for purposes to mitigate such as planting trees. It can't be used to further remove other trees. And I, I do understand that from a legal respect-
Is that a certain law? Is that a certain council put in? Or can council change that rule?
That's, that's actually a, that's a constitutional due process, right? We cannot take money from people to mitigate for something and use it for a different purpose. So that's actually not something that council could change. And my comments are limited to the tree trust fund in particular, but when we collect money for a particular purpose, we can't spend it for other purposes. Otherwise, we'd have to give the money back.
So basically, we have no fund to help folks do anything, basically?
That fund cannot be used to, to help folks, and I, I do understand that it's a problem.
So we have no fund, we have no program in the city to help citizens at all dealing with trees?
I am not aware of any program that the city has with that.
I think, I think we need to come up with something, gentlemen. That's a big issue. I know we have a lot of tree lovers, and I, I respect that, but, you know, in certain communities, if you drive through, you have limbs that are hanging over in the streets that even our own workers are not cutting, maybe because we don't have enough staff to cut the trees. It is a problem. And when I have senior citizens and folks that just can't afford, and then all of a sudden now, we have a storm or winds come and these things fall on their houses or fall on their backyards, and they sit there, and then we got code to go and get them fined because we don't have money to help them or there's not a, a service to help them, I, I'm, I'm lost for words for that. So I think we're going to have to have staff looking at something or have something established to help citizens in our community with these issues, because it is a true issue in other parts of, of the city. It is a big issue. You drive down on Sanchez Street, you drive down on Nineteenth, and you see limbs just hanging in the roadway. Hanging in the roadway for years. You're driving South for Springs. It's ridiculous. It's so dark, you wonder why it's so gloomy over there. It's so dark, there's no sunlight even coming into the place. I mean, simple issues that we need to address and find a way to help people, help communities. And I understand if, if there's a law procuring, a, a mandate that we can't take money from that here, we've got to create something to help citizens or have a fund to, or increase our budget to help with these tree situations in these blighted communities, because it is an issue, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, I wasn't necessarily going there, but let me give my thoughts to Mr. Goode in regard to, to this issue. I agree with the legal conclusion on the tree trust fund, because I think I, I was actually here when we had created that. So I don't, I don't think that's an opportunity. However, I think in the, in the CRAs especially, we might have some flexibility. For example, we're providing up to fifteen thousand dollars for people to make, quote, "home improvements." Okay? If they got a bad roof, or a bad plumbing, or that sort of thing, we just, we just, you know, implemented that program for up to thirty families to do that. I think we probably could have the ability to expand that program if somebody has a, a tree issue, especially if it's potentially a risk or danger to, to their home, number one. So I think we could do that with, with our CRA money and the CRA program. We, all we'd have to do is just tweak up that program to include those types of situations. That's just my opinion, obviously.
We, we just did. We did approve for the East Tampa CRA, it's going to put the tree cutting component in there, so we did do that. But it's, you know, some of those areas, you know, are in CRAs, so we have to look at it as well.
Salt spring, et cetera.
Right. So, you know, that, we, East Tampa saw that need, so I'm glad we're addressing that. But, you know, we sit on this council as a whole as well, so we have to look at needs other places as well.
Right. But then the other, the other thing that you mentioned was, is limbs hanging out into the street. And clearly, that's a city responsibility. That's not the, even if that, even if the, the base of the tree is on private property when that branch extends out over the, out over the street, especially if it's low enough to, you know, be hitting trucks or whatever, then that is a cit, a city responsibility. And I think we should, as a matter of fact, I called one in yesterday because it was blocking the view right there at the corner of Cypress and, and Armenia, it was blocking the view of the, of the, of the traffic light. As I approached the traffic light, the tree was hanging so low, I couldn't see the traffic light. I knew it was there because I drive there often. But I'm thinking to myself, wow, somebody could get T-boned if they didn't see that traffic light. So anyway, so I think we, you know, we all need to be vigilant and make sure that that department, I don't know what department that is.
Forestry, I think it is. Forestry handles trees?
Trees in the street? Parks?
Yeah. Yes, urban forestry with parks.
But they've got a small, I think they've got a small crew over there, really, very small.
Maybe we need to beef, beef, beef that up. Ms. Coyle, in regard to the, to the original part of this presentation, in regard to the tree ordinance, obviously, we don't have a lot of time today because we have so many items on the workshop agenda, but I, a couple of things. Number one, I don't know if you mentioned this, but, but, but I, I inquired of you in the last couple of days to identify how many grand trees or protected trees that, that have been impacted and lost, in my opinion, lost, or taken out as a result of this tree ordinance? Did you, did you give us that as part of your report?
No, that is part of the reporting. I mentioned, there's a reporting requirement in the code for TRZ trees specifically, and that's the report that is pending programming into Excela right now to capture, because we're inputting the data. We actually built it in there to actually capture the data in the, in the system, and now we're waiting for the report to be fully configured so we can pull it out. But it is specific to TRZ trees.
Do we have a preliminary number?
I'd have to go back and manually calculate it, and unfortunately, we're not able to do that right now.
I know, I know a couple of things. At some point, I think that this council needs a thorough education on the new tree code in terms of how it works. That became very obvious to us about a week and, two weeks ago, when we had a couple of tree cases, and all of a sudden, we're all sort of flying by the seat of our pants in terms of saying, is this rezoning covered by the, you know, by the TRZ, and is it not? And I didn't have the answer, and, you know, I, I don't know that anybody else had the definitive answer. And I think part of that is, we, we need, we need to be trained on that.
Kathy Beck and I would always be happy to come back and do a workshop to explain.
Yeah. How long, how long do you think you might need in terms of time to come, I mean, in terms of minutes, to come back and, and give us a decent education with, with some questions and answers?
We, we do a mini-training session with actually industry folks in an hour, and that's from beginning to end. We, we could condense that if needed, and that does allow for questions as well.
Okay. I'll hold, I'll hold that motion.
I believe Ms. Kurt has something to say.
Thank you. Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. We had also requested just a few additional minutes as part of this workshop to give a brief explanation about the tree removal zone, otherwise known as the TRZ, because you're starting to hear some cases, not a thorough complete tree code from start to finish, which is what Councilman Dingfelder was requesting, but when you're done with questions, I do have a short presentation just to make sure we're on the same page.
I did, I thought you guys were done. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
And beforehand, any other comments?
May I say something? I just remember something. There was a reporting in the Tampa Bay Times, formerly the St. Pete Times, but now it's Tampa Bay Times, that there's a lawsuit going on on Dandy Boulevard, and it's any way that anything we say may hamper this lawsuit.
Thank you, Councilman Miranda. Not about what I'm about to talk about, and that deals with the state law, and I know that everyone would like to talk about that state law and probably have a lot of questions, but we'd rather introduce, we'd rather speak to you about that individually rather than talk about it today, because that is our standard course when we have pending litigation.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick question. My colleague mentioned the, the tree trust fund. The, a lot of the tree activists have been asking about the status of the, I think there was an audit done on the tree trust fund because there was an allegation that a lot of it was swept and used for other purposes. Is that done? What, did I miss the result of that, or what's the?
That's not with us. The, the, just, because it's a newer council. For reference, the Planning and Development Department, we assess the fees and collect them through the building permit process. The Parks Department has actually allocated the money to spend it, so any auditing and reporting would come from them on how it's spent. We do the reporting on what's collected.
Do you, do you happen, sorry?
I'm not aware of other status.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Dandy?
Thank you, and I agree, Councilmember Carlson. There was also, I think that periodicity is supposed to report to us the finding of facts, how many, how much money was collected and where the trees were planted out of that fund. I believe it was every three months or every six months, I forget what it was. In fact, I'm the guy who brought it up and I forgot because I, I knew it'd come.
Any response? Any response? Okay, just making sure. Uh, Councilman Sutro.
Counsel, if, if you could turn your head over this way in case I, cause I don't wanna mention the lawsuit, but I do wanna recognize that there's some people out in the audience. Ms. Chelsea Johnson, uh, Ms. Beck, Ms. Duncan, Ms. Kristen Mora, uh, TBBA, uh, and, and countless other peoples that spent so much time on this tree ordinance. I thank you very, very much. It's the most legal binding and most environmentally binding tree ordinance in the country, in my opinion. However, if I may say home rule, we, the, the state has, has superseded us in a lot of things. And there may be a lawsuit against us now. And, and if, if people are concerned about our tree canopy, I suggest you call your state representatives and your state legislators, state senators, and tell them we need home rule specifically on this point. Was I able to say that?
You just did, yes.
Thank you.
Are you Hispanic? And Councilman Dingfelder?
All right, so I wanna, I wanna dance a similar tightrope. Um, because I think it's extremely important. Uh, Ms. Beck, you hiding back there? I just have one quick question, and it's not related to any particular property. It's related to the city at large, it's not related to any particular lawsuit or any particular property. Uh, but you and I were chatting about this, uh, yesterday. But I think you have at least anecdotally a, a, an approximation of how many trees that, that this community, this city has grand trees or large protected trees that we've lost that you could attribute to the new state statute. Generically, in a big sense, not related to any property at all.
With all due respect, Councilman Dingfelder, um, I've been instructed to defer to the Legal Department for that question.
Do they have a number?
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, we don't. And we understand, again, that this is of utmost importance to this council and to all local governments. It's a, it's a very big issue. But while this lawsuit is still pending and where it is in this particular time, we'd really rather not have any comments on it because I can't tell you whether they'll help us in this litigation. And certainly, we're not trying to hide the information, I think it should be available. But I'm just not in position right now to, to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, just before, uh, you get back up there, just wanted to, uh, affirm, uh, Councilman Goode's and, uh, and Dingfelder's points with regards to assistance with any, uh, tree cutting that, that, uh, Councilman, uh, Dingfelder, uh, your, your points are a hundred and ten percent on point with regards to, uh, taking a look at CRAs and, 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 and then Councilman Goode's, uh, other areas such as, uh, Sulfur Springs, uh, Terrace Park, Copeland Park, et cetera, areas that are outside of CRAs where we really could, I think, uh, use that kind of assistance. I think through those two, uh, methods, I, I would be, uh, very supportive of that, so, just for my own two cents. So, Ms. Kurt, if you wanted to come up?
Thank you. Again, Rebecca Kurt, I'm gonna provide some handout documents to you.
And, excuse me, while you're coming up there, I know we always break for lunch, uh, council members and, and staff. Uh, what, what is, uh, twelve fifteen okay, twelve ten?
Thirty.
Twelve thirty, is that?
If we've got a lot going on, why don't we just break at twelve?
Yeah, let's, okay with everybody, twelve? Okay, we shall prospectively break at twelve.
Thank you, counsel. Again, Rebecca Kurt, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here to give you, um, a very narrow focus of the changes to your tree code. And that is about the grand tree removal for construction activities. So these are non-hazardous, non-dangerous grand trees, um, that are being removed for construction activity. And I'm going to do a very high level, um, high level review of this and explain to you what your role is. And you're certainly gonna be seeing a lot of these since this went, in effect, four months ago. You're already starting to see these. So you start with somebody who has a non-hazardous grand tree that they want to remove it. And the first question is, is a lot eligible to be considered for a tree removal zone? So the first question is, what is the tree removal zone? But I'm actually gonna get into that in a second. And I'm gonna talk to you about what lots are eligible for consideration on that. So it is any lot that is sixty-five feet or less in width, a hundred and thirty feet or less in depth, and sixty-five hundred square feet in lot area or less. And it has to be all three of those. If you are larger than, um, that in any of those characteristics, you are not considered eligible lot for tree removal zone purposes. Um, I also wanna make it clear that this is not just residential lots. It was a policy determination made, but it was all small lots, the same policy issues applied, whether it was commercial or residential. Um, there is one nuance, that it is not lots that are within the Parkland Estates Everly Districts because those are, um, covered by a state law. A very particular, um, area in the city. So what is a tree removal zone? The tree removal zone, as you start with a lot, this is an example of the largest lot. So it's sixty-five, a hundred and thirty, um, feet. And you start with the setbacks and whatever the setbacks are for that particular zoning district. And then you go five feet in on the front, side, side street and corner yards, and ten feet in, in the rear yards. And any tree that is, um, is within the tree remo- removal zone or a maximum of the tree at the tree removal zone is, is located within it, can come out administratively. And that is, um, measured, uh, DBH, um, is, is the measurement of what the majority of it, that has to be, so it's the trunk, majority of, I'm sorry, the majority of the trunk that has to be in the tree removal zone. And that are the ones that can come out administratively. So I know that there has been some questions, um, to you about that. I also, you will not see trees that are eligible, um, for the tree removal zone because those can come out administratively. However, if you have a healthy tree and either the lot isn't eligible or the tree is not within the tree removal zone, they will come to you. Um, in addition, when a tree is within the tree removal zone, there's one other, um, nuance to that. If you are building a particularly small structure, and that structure can be placed on the property and say with that fifteen feet of the trunk of the tree, then you also cannot administratively take out the tree. So those would also come to you. Your code provides a list of consideration factors for you to consider when you are, um, actually analyzing these. You will hear them either through a review hearing because they went to a variance and that variance was appealed, or you'll be hearing them through your plan development issues. The major things that you will be looking at through the consideration factors is can the tree be saved? And is it reasonable to take those methods to save the tree? So some things you have to consider is, are there alternative methods of construction? And what is the cost of construction? What is the health of the tree? And, um, I think when you're hearing all that, it will also be made clear to you that you're gonna have to have some expert testimony on that. So natural resources will be appearing at your, uh, council meetings when you hear these to provide you some expert testimony so you can understand what the effect of moving the tree will have on the crown canopy, the overall health of the tree. Um, I'm hitting that at a very high level, um, because you will be provided all of this information at the individual hearings. It's gonna be very fact-specific. I will be there if there are any questions, staff will be there if there are any factual questions, and we'll work through that at this time. But we wanted to make sure that you had an understanding of when and why trees were coming to you and when and why they were not, under your current tree code. We will be talking about these issues a lot more as they come up to you in the individual cases. But again, we just wanted to make sure that you had a, an overall understanding of the TRZ zone because many members of this council weren't here when it was adopted.
Thank you. Any questions for members? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kurt, um, one of the questions I had in, in regard to this is these consideration factors. And, um, specifically, a few pages in, it talks about table four dash two notes for the purposes of preserving grand tree, building heights and yards applicable, maybe altered without a variance, et cetera. So tell us, tell us how that works specifically, as, and not as related to council's review, but as related to staff review.
Yes, I actually have that printed out in a chart, and I'm just trying to get to my right. Hold on that one. No, I actually, I already wrote it. Thank you. Okay. All right, so another change in the tree code is that an allowance is made in changes to setbacks that can be made administratively to save a tree. So, for example, up to twenty-five percent reduction for front and corner yards, up to one foot reduction for side yard, forty percent reduction for rear yard, and ten percent increase for building height. This can be done without a design exception and without coming to council and without going into VRB in order to save a specimen tree. In other words, this is as of right under your code. There's an additional, um, allowance that's made, um, for up to twenty-five percent for side yards. That's a design exception too. What that means to you is it is administrative decision that notices provided, so there's an opportunity to review it. Particularly with side yards, you have a lot of interaction with your neighbor. Um, and so those were, um, pulled out and put in a notice public hearing process. But the rest of those are allowed as of right.
So my question, I guess, is, is in regard to the interpretation of this, this page, this provision, is, is this something that staff can mandate to the builder, to the, to the property owner, to the developer? Um, in other words, in other words, developer, in other words, can the developer say, I don't wanna move, I don't wanna move the house. I don't wanna be closer to the street. I don't wanna be closer to the side, I don't wanna be closer to the rear. This tree is in the TRZ area, and therefore, I wanna take it out. Uh, or, in the alternative, can staff utilize this page and say, we believe you can save the tree by moving, by sliding this house or building up closer to the street? And that's an appropriate thing to do in order to save this hundred-year-old grand tree?
These provisions come into play when you are considering reasonable configuration?
When who is?
When the VRB or city council is through a plan development or, um, or through a petition for review of a VRB decision. This doesn't necessarily come into play when it's in the TRZ because you have a right, if you beat the requirements of the TRZ, that tree has a right to be removed.
Right. So, so I guess that's exactly my point.
Yes.
And it's not a point that I'm gonna elaborate too much today. But when I, when I, when the ordinance was explained to me yesterday, and I, you put that back up for a second, Rebecca, I'm sorry. Um, when it was explained to me yesterday, and this came to mind, that this, somehow we've created this secret tree decimation zone. As opposed to basically saying, you know, we should be, we should give staff the ability to work with that developer and say, oh, we can save this tree if you slide that zone up or sideways a little bit. Okay, and Ms. Mr. Sutro, I, I totally respect what you said and respect the work that went into this, but nothing's ever perfect. And I think that at some point down the road, we, working with the community and the development community, should address this specific issue is, can this TRZ zone be sort of a sliding box? Okay? And maybe if we slid that box, the development box, if staff had the ability to slide that development box up sideways or down to save the tree, then everybody's purpose is served. We've saved the tree, but at the same time, we've saved the developer's property rights, the owner's, property owner's property rights by allowing them to build that same home just slightly elsewhere on the lot. So anyway, don't wanna go into it much further today. But it's something I think that we need to address, and especially as Kathy Coe comes back to us, with a further report, you know, perhaps in January or February.
Thank you, councilman. Certainly, these are policy issues, and the policy issue that was determined is that there needed to be some area where there was some level of certainty. That was a policy decision of the prior council. Um, after much discussion, certainly, it is a policy decision that can be considered. And I did neglect to mention that everything good in my presentation, all these handouts, was created by Kristen Mora, who we're all privileged enough to work with. And anything that you did not like, I will take responsibility for.
Thank you. Thank you to Kristen.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay, next, we're gonna move to, uh, public comment on item number eleven. And I, I understand that, uh, Mr. Freddie Barton is here, who was gonna comment, I believe, on number twelve?
Fifteen.
Or fifteen, excuse me. Okay, fifteen, excuse me. Um, if, uh, if you wish to come forward, sir, you may. Uh, Mr. Barton, and, and anyone else who's coming. Uh, how many folks are here to comment on item number eleven? If you could raise your hands, I guess. Okay, come forward, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Lumailly again. I was, uh, one of the citizens that was intimately involved in this tree code, uh, for multiple years, actually. Um, one of the things that I don't see coming to fruition, um, Bill, uh, asked about it, was the reporting. And, um, I understand we have different departments in the city, and one department might do one thing and another, like they collect the money and somebody else spends the money. But we can't let that stand in the way of having good, solid facts and transparency about what's coming in money-wise, what kinds of trees are getting taken out, and the counterbalance of where is the money going into what kinds of trees, what, what size of trees, what areas of town, et cetera. And I feel that we are not there yet. We got some things mentioned in the code, but they're not being operationalized, and nobody from Parks is even here at this update. And we have no sense of what's happened under the new code. So I know it's only been four and a half months, but I think unless you guys take some additional action to require Parks to participate more fully in these and to have, um, maybe a design session about what kind of meaningful reports should be in place so that we understand what are we taking out and what are we putting in? Again, not just the money, but the kinds of trees and the canopy and everything else on an integrated holistic basis. I think that our city deserves that, and I ask you to take action on that front. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Morning, Steve McAlini. Um, I was part of the component that was working with the TBBA and Chelsea Johnson. We met week after week, uh, and hammered out issues at her home, also here in council chambers, and at city, uh, city staff offices. This code has barely taken effect. And to start making changes or proposing changes before it even is, is really in the system, I, I think is, is going in the wrong direction. And we just need to give it time to work. You know, when we walked away from the podium when the city council adopted this code, the homeowners and the neighborhood associations weren't a hundred percent happy. The builders and the development community weren't a hundred percent happy. But we went away and said, we, we worked at it, we did the best we could do, and we came up with a plan that we thought would work. And we need to give it time for that plan to work. Uh, one of the prerequisites for that was that in six months, it was gonna be revisited to see what, what had happened. And as Kathy Coe has already pointed out, uh, some of the elements haven't even been integrated into the system yet. And, and I don't fault the staff for that. It's just it's a very large, complex problem. And I think we need to give the code time to work. So as far as making changes, I would say, don't, don't make any changes now because then you, council chambers are gonna be filled again, and we're gonna spend another two years, which is what we spent last time, two years, working on developing this code. And, um, we respect that there, there are some issues that may come up, but, um, we need to give it time to, to really get integrated in the system, figure out how we're gonna deal with it. Uh, it's not perfect, but it seems to be working so far. I don't think we've had any major complaints or major issues surface because of that. And, um, if there are, I'm sure you'll hear about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder?
Just generic comment, not to you, Steve, but, uh, these trees have been there a hundred years. Once they're gone, they're gone. Okay, not, not looking for any response, you had your time. All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, once they're, once they're.
I've got forty seconds left.
Well, we'll wait until after.
Did you reserve for rebuttal?
We'll wait until after the councilman's finished.
The bo- bottom line, Steve, is, once they're gone, they're gone. And I'm not saying the ordinance, you know, has pros and cons and that sort of thing. And I'm not saying I'm looking to change anything now, or council's looking to change anything now. I'm saying that within a few months, I think we should revisit it when we have some numbers. I asked Kathy for some numbers, she said she doesn't have numbers yet. I asked Kathy Beck for some numbers about the state statute. We, we were told we can't have those, that discussion today. I know there's some numbers out there about trees that have been removed un- under both of these programs. But, but we're not, we're not at liberty to get, to go there today. But my point is, they're not just numbers. Some of these are very, very large trees that we're losing. I'm saying, we should always take every opportunity to save these trees and to protect property rights in a balanced form. So that's my point.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have my 40 seconds?
You may use your 40 seconds, go for it.
Rebuttal on public comment.
Well, I mean, you mentioned my name, and then you used me as an example, but everybody that was involved in those committees wanted to save trees, they didn't wanna cut them down wholesale. And in that respect, I don't think there has been this catastrophic removal of trees under the city code. That hasn't happened, and it's managed the system as it was supposed to manage it, and you haven't had people come in and say, absolutely throw the baby out with the bathwater. So, anyway, respectfully request that we look at it, examine it, if there's some adjustments, fine, otherwise, just leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Thank you, Steve.
Honorable counsel, thank you for this opportunity. Quickly, I'm gonna address the tree removal zone, because I was intimately involved.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, could you please state your name?
Cynthia Duncan.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm an engineer and a lawyer, and I worked many, many hours with Ricky Pederica, certified arborist, and we went through dozens, if not hundreds, of scenarios, because our goal was to shrink the tree removal zone down until any tree that's in that zone, and you're building a house, it's a sure thing for removal. We didn't want there to be any doubt that that tree could not be saved and keep the property owners with his rights. So, that's why the tree removal zone, it's not the buildable area, it's much smaller. In fact, I always say, I defy you to save a tree that's in that zone, and you're building a house that fills that buildable area. It simply, it's not reasonable, it's patently unreasonable. So, that's where the tree removal zone came from. But I appreciate you guys getting educated, and getting smart on this, and answering the hard questions, 'cause I don't think I need to tell you, if a tree can be saved, I'm here to try to save it. But those trees in the tree removal zone are the trees that can't be saved. Even the most ardent tree lovers agreed with the tree removal zone, the builders, we all agreed. So, with that said, what this council needs to do is, you have to be fair, and you have to be equitable, as you apply this tree code. You not only have to follow the city code, you have to follow state law and ensure that no property owner is unduly burdened, out of proportion to the public benefit. So, that's above the city code, you have to do that, or our code will be thrown out. You can't make arbitrary and capricious decisions, you must ask the right questions, get the briefings from natural resources, from the staff, and rely on their expertise. It doesn't matter if the tree's in the northeast terrace community, or Sulfur Springs, or the tree is on Davis Islands, and you've got the Daika Tree Committee defending it. You should treat each citizen fairly, regardless of where they live, because if a tree needs to come out for that property owner, it doesn't matter if he's in the poorest neighborhood or in Davis Island. You've gotta be equitable and ensure that substantial justice is done, and I think if you do that, then our tree code will stand up to scrutiny even in higher courts. You know, it's, and planting more trees, plant more trees, that's our only defense right now against 1159. So, please, support that, and I agree that there are neighborhoods that need responsible pruning done, and the city needs to find a way to help those people get that done, because responsible pruning is gonna save our trees, too. So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good afternoon. It's hard to be one of the last public comment speakers, I know everyone is tired and hungry. Chelsea Johnson, from Tampa, and I'm the founder of Tree Something, Say Something, and I didn't have much prepared today, because I actually did come to hear the staff reports with the six-month review, and it sort of sneaked up on the volunteers. I emailed everyone yesterday, or we would've had a larger turnout. So, frankly, I'm relieved that we have a couple more months to hear the reporting from the city, who has done a tremendous job with keeping up with this new tree code and working on it. We spent many hours working with the city of Tampa, neighborhoods, and the builders, and I just wanted to say thank you to the city. They had House Bill 1159 sprung on them after, with very little notice, and they are working very hard to protect our canopy, so thank you for that. Couple things. One, Councilman Dingfelder, and others that are new to the council, I and other volunteers met over hundreds of hours with the building community to come up with what we felt balanced keeping our canopy and property rights. And that came about from many, many hours of discussion. Some of your very vocal tree advocates from the Davis Island Tree Committee came and spoke in support of it, the builders spoke in support of it. Ms. Duncan and I, along with some other volunteers, have gone to Joe Chalora, one of the original writers of the tree code, he approved our idea and our plan. We actually, at one point, had empty Keurig boxes that we were taking to the council members, and the prior ones, and other volunteers, and people that were interested, to demonstrate how the tree removal zone worked. The purpose of the tree removal zone is to incentivize keeping trees. It allows for builders to have a streamlined process to move a tree around, I'm sorry, a building around in order to keep a tree. So, I encourage you to please look into our hard work. I am happy to come meet with you and show you some of our fun green diagrams, and move it around, and show you how it works. But the purpose for me to come today, and I only have 45 seconds left, was to ask, how can we get the ball rolling to allocate funds from the Tree Trust Fund into the Tree Mendis program? I'm just a citizen, I don't know how to do this, it's dealing with money, but that was why I was here today, was to ask how we can move money from the Tree Trust Fund into the Tree Mendis program. I personally applied for two crepe myrtle trees to help mitigate the effects of HB 1159, and it's a 10-month waiting period for two crepe myrtles due to lack of funding, so I would like your help to see if we can get the Parks Department and the Tree Mendis program some additional funding. May I have 30 more seconds?
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay. So, I don't know how to do that, but I'm hoping that you all can help us with that. The city of Tampa already has a program in place to help with tree mitigation. In the new tree code, this was another initiative that we brought forward, was, and it's exciting, mitigation trees can be planted on private property. Trees on private property tend to be well-cared for...
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for the additional time.
Yes, ma'am. Next, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Freddie Barton, Executive Director, Safe and Sound Hillsborough, and I appreciate you letting me speak ahead of the workshop discussion. I'm here in support of the reentry ordinance, and as most of you know, with Safe and Sound Hillsborough, we're focusing on violence prevention. We're trying to get ahead of violence, we're trying to make sure that youth in our communities feels safe, our community feels connected, and resources are made available. We started our efforts in four key target areas. We started in East Tampa University area, Plant City, and South County. Four separate communities in all of Hillsborough County, very unique in their own right. However, one thing came up as a primary concern, and that was, we need jobs in our area. When we looked further down into the data, it was, we need jobs for those who were chronically unemployed, underemployed, and those who had barriers to employment, including ex-offenders. Councilman Carlson, thank you for that report. One of the things that came out from that report is, we see that we have graduates, a high percentage of population with college degrees, yet we still have a relatively high unemployment number. We still see that we have a high poverty level. When you look at the national data, unemployment rate is at 6.4%, however, in the population of formerly incarcerated individuals, the unemployment rate for those who have been recently released over a three-year period, within a three-year period, is at 46.4%. So, we have to do locally a lot of work in order to make sure that people with barriers to employment, including those ex-offenders or returning citizens, have opportunities for family sustaining employment. Education is the great equalizer for economic empowerment, and family sustaining employment is one of the key strategies to reduce violence and criminal behavior in our communities. I wanted to hopefully hear more of the discussion from staff. Unfortunately, I have to leave, but I wanted to make sure that I spoke to you in support of addressing a reentry ordinance. The city of Tampa did its due diligence a couple of years ago, thanks to efforts by Hope and other advocacy groups and individuals, to look at Ban the Box. And there was a discussion as to how do we expand that effort to individuals and organizations that wanna do business with the city of Tampa. I asked that you look at that, and look at having some more workshops involving the community. We had several members of the community that were here earlier, but had to leave. When we look at the data, if we do not aggressively address reentry, then we will see violence in our community increase, we will see criminal behavior, and we will see our recidivism rates increase. That will have a long-term negative effect on the per capita base, here we are in the city of Tampa in Hillsborough County. So, I just wanted to really have that discussion, be able to speak my comments, and I'd love to be a part of the discussion, and certainly weigh in on the report and look at the data, too.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gudes, did you wanna say something? Sir?
Mr. Barton, thank you for, I didn't know it was gonna last as long, but I'm glad you were here to at least give us some insight, and I wanna make sure the public knows, it's not just people who have gone to prison, I wanna make that clear, a conviction. You can be arrested and not go to prison, and not go to jail, but have a small misdemeanor conviction that prevents you from housing, prevents you from getting a job, and that's why we're in the situation we have in some of our communities. So, I wanna make the council know, it's not people reentering from prison. It could be anyone who have a misfortune one night and have a conviction, and they're held, what I call putting the foot on the neck forever. And that's why, hopefully, this afternoon, we'll get a lot more information from staff to how we can implement something, so we can take the foot off people's necks as it relates to housing and jobs.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Iskandar?
And just to piggyback quickly on that, I believe in forgiveness and second chances. You can't punish someone for the rest of their lives because of mistakes that they've made in the past. You know, that's not what life is about, so, I just wanna say that. Thank you.
Yep, and I look forward to hearing more about this endeavor. Okay, thank you very much. Now, we're going to take a lunch break, it is 12:10 or so? Is about 1 o'clock, 1:10, okay? 1:15, okay? We shall return. Counselors, recess.